All right, everybody, let's get started.
Today is Monday, May 28, 2019, 7:05 PM. Chris Abelloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Galloppa.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Melanie Chongalula-Nester.
Here.
Stephanie Hennel.
Here.
And Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
All right, this meeting is held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Okay. Let's just a few housekeeping issues. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 14, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I'd just like to notice everyone in the public that we are being filmed tonight by AP-TV, so this will be on television at some later point. We'll get started now with the first application, Jamal's National Guard Armory, 637 Lake Avenue. Yes, but before we get started, Eric would like to recuse himself from this application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Serbikov.
Three members of the board were not in attendance, so we have listened to tapes, complete exhibits, and so on, and our eligible certifications were signed tonight. They would be Melanie Chongalula-Nester, Stephanie Hennel, and Christopher Gonzalez.
Thank you, Jack.
We have seven out of seven.
And also, there's an issue we had spoke about earlier about any additional cops we noticed.
I have them, we're fine. We're fine. Can you read? Mr. Harris renoticed for prior reason that this was carried from or notices were issued. So we're good.
All right, Mr. Harris, it's your show.
If I can just put my appearance on the record, Andrew Harrison from Fox Rush, on behalf of the applicant here. As the board as well, we're here for an application for a certificate, not for me, we're going to property located at 637 Lake Ave., which is Block 2404, Block 4. We had a few witnesses that testified last time. I will be calling additional witnesses here tonight to support the application that we are making. First, I'm going to call Mr. Scavino.
Please raise your right hand. You swear affirming testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth. State your name to the record and spell your last name.
Patrick Scavino, S-C-H-I-A-V-I-N-O.
Thank you.
Please sit.
Mr. Scavino, you're familiar, obviously, with downtown Asbury Park, am I correct?
Yes, I am.
And you've been a resident here for quite some time. You actually own property here in downtown Asbury Park, correct?
That's correct.
Can you give me the timeframe of when you first commenced your business or residing here in Asbury?
Well, I started here in 1984 as buying property. I've been an active realtor broker since that time. I've owned several buildings downtown. I started in 2000 buying buildings downtown. I've lived downtown since 2001, and I'm still living downtown.
And when you say you live in downtown, is that on Cookman Avenue?
Yes, 631 Cookman Avenue.
So that's one block away from Lake Avenue, am I correct?
That's correct.
And are you familiar with what is now known as the CBD, the Central Business District in the downtown of Asbury Market?
Yes.
Now, are you familiar with property located at 637 Lake Ave., which is now a vacant lot across from the VFW building?
I am.
And how is it that you're familiar with that property?
Because since I can remember, it's been a parking lot.
When you say since you remember, that predates the year 2000 from when you began working here as a realtor, am I correct?
Yes, it's the early 80s.
And when you say it was used as a parking lot, how was it used as a parking lot? If you can share.
Cars would park there. There was an attendant at the parking lot taking money.
And these are personal observations I can make?
Yes.
And that was all the way back from the 1980s, if you can recall, am I correct?
Yes.
And did that continue forward into the more recent years, maybe 2000s?
Yes.
And through 2010 up through near today?
That's correct. No further questions.
Could you please sit? The board may have a question or two for you, Mr. Scavino. When's the last time you saw the particular lot being used as a parking lot?
Most, the most recent time was, I guess, during this past year after Mr. Jamal bought the lot and he opened it up. But before that, I can remember when Taka was leasing it and renting it out. A fellow by the name of Tommy who works at Taka would take the money. On many occasions, when I had guests coming in from out of town, knowing that they weren't going to be able to find a parking downtown, I would pre-arrange for them and prepay to hold the spot for my guests in the lot. I remember Clarice being out there taking money for many, many years.
When you say many, many years, how many is many, many years?
As long as I can remember. I mean, I wasn't really peeping the tabs on what they were doing because, you know, I didn't have to talk about it.
So prior to Taka leasing the property, did you see somebody attending the lot?
Absolutely. I can remember when there was a booth on that lot.
When was that?
In the early 80s.
A booth for public parking, you assumed?
I would assume.
Well, do you remember that lot having anything on it other than just being a parking lot?
No, it's always been, yeah, I mean, it's always been a parking lot.
So there was never a building per se that you could recall, correct? So when you say a booth, the structure that you saw, it's not the residential structure of business, or was it like?
It was a booth, you know, I guess selling tickets.
How did Taka arrange to use that parking lot? Do you know, Mr. Scavino?
I'm assuming that they made a deal with the owner.
But you don't know anything about that?
I don't.
You don't know about the arrangements, but you have recollection of Taka utilizing it?
But you made a statement and said that he leased the lot?
Yeah.
So you know that for a fact?
Well, they had an arrangement. I don't know if there was a.
So you don't know if there was a lease?
I don't know. That's correct.
Do you also have any knowledge of whether or not the VFW have the lot for their personal parking use, so that the booth was for people who are VFW members?
The booth, I can't comment on because I don't know what the booth was for.
Okay.
Once again, I wasn't really paying attention back then because parking was an issue.
And then when people, you said that years and years, people were there attending the lot, collecting money?
Yeah.
And do you know if those were people that were working for the VFW, for the VFW customers?
It was, yes, it was, and not. People that worked for the VFW would man the lot, and then people that didn't work for the VFW.
Was it, but do you know if it was for VFW customers or members?
I know, I know that Taka had an arrangement.
Other than Taka?
It was open to the public.
How do you know that?
Because people could park there and pay.
But you don't know firsthand if it was people in the public, general public, or if it was people and members from the VFW, correct?
No, it was a mix, all right? The VFW only used that lot when they had special events, which was, you know, maybe every other week, once a month. I don't really know what their schedule was. That lot was consistently open, consistently manned, and people were taking money.
And you know firsthand that it wasn't for VFW, it was public, just regular public?
That's correct.
But you're, how do you know that? That's what I'm just trying to figure out.
Because I parked there, and I had people park there, and I would direct people to park there that were coming to town, knowing that that was the only place that they may be able to find parking.
Back through 1984?
No, no, more recently. Like I said before, there was no need for parking.
But so let me just, I'm kind of trying to, and I don't mean to keep belaboring the point, but other than the period of time that Taka was running the parking lot?
Right.
Prior to that, so let's say like prior to 2005, which I'm really more concerned about. Prior to 2005, do you know if that parking lot was used for public purposes, or was it just a parking lot for the VFW members and customers?
Prior to 2005, I can only tell you that people were parking the lot and people were taking money, that it wasn't, that back then, there was no need for.
But are you aware, Mr. Scavino, that that wasn't done properly with Taka, that the city stopped?
I have nothing to do with that, I'm sorry.
No, but as you're making that reference to Taka using that parking lot through some type of agreement, it was stopped by the city?
I don't know that.
Well, is he using it now?
No.
No.
No, but from what I know, if I can go on, all right? Taka, Taka's deal with the VFW ended when ownership ended, right? And that's all that I know. And then, you know, I was actually privy to a situation where the current owner wanted to make a deal with Taka, so I was involved in that as a realtor.
What year is this, Pat?
Recently.
Within the past couple of years?
Yeah. And when the deal couldn't be made, that's when the current owner went public and made a parking lot with his own use. And that's when all, that's when all this happened because apparently it brought people the wrong way, the way it was being handled, and a complaint came into City Hall, and that's, I think, what brought this whole thing to a head.
That's your own opinion?
Yeah, I'm full of opinion.
I don't think you can give us an opinion on that, but.
Well, what you've testified factually is what you recall and what you observed in terms of utilization of that lot by people, public coming to use, am I correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any further questions from the board?
Do you have any knowledge of any free parking in the lot?
Free parking?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't. I mean, if people parked there for free, but when it wasn't attended, I have no idea. Once again, that's not my business, I'm just.
No, I'm just asking one question.
I go buy that lot pretty much every day of my life for one reason or another, so.
No, what's the question?
I don't.
Everyone good on the board? Board professionals, do you have any questions for Mr. Scavino? I guess we have to open it up for the counter.
I may ask cross-exam questions for the board and what I'm asking of the witness.
And what about Mr. Raffato, Jack? Do we have a cross-examine?
Of course.
Yeah.
I have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Raffato. All right. One yet. From the general public, any questions for Mr. Scavino? Please come up, state your name.
Yes, cornerbound corner, 5th Avenue. In reference to the small booth that you were discussing, what street did that fall down?
It was more in the middle of the lot, where it wasn't on a front.
It wasn't on either entrance, the Lake Avenue side?
No, I remember, I mean, I'm going back in time, but I remember that there was structure kind of towards the back of the lot.
Thank you.
If I can just follow up. Have you ever read the CBD plan?
Yes.
And you're familiar with certain photographs on the CBD plan, am I correct? Certain aerial photographs?
Yes.
This will be A1, the last hearing, so there's nothing more?
Sure.
I'm going to show you what's been marked as A1 for identification. Do you recognize that as an arrow containing the CBD redevelopment plan?
Yes.
And do you recognize, or do you see there's a Lake Avenue designation, am I correct? And you can see there as an intersection upon Street, am I correct?
Yes.
Do you see the parking lot at 637 Lake Ave. that we're talking about?
Yes.
And you see a booth, the parking booth, or what appears to be a booth in that photograph?
No, I see two little, a rectangle with shadows, so that's it. That's kind of where I remember thinking about the lot.
How far back does this go?
Halfway. Do you want me to show that to Mr. Raffato?
No, no, what timeframe is that, probably?
In your CBD plan? CBD plan was 2000.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Scavino?
Is that it? I'm assuming.
Any further questions for Mr. Scavino from the public? Thank you, Mr. Scavino.
Next, I'd like to call Peter Siegel.
Please raise your right hand. You swear affirming testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Peter Siegel, S-E-G-E-L. Mr. Siegel, you're familiar with Asbury Park, am I correct?
I am.
And how is it that you're familiar with Asbury?
I'm a resident of Asbury Park since 2000. I've been working here since that same time.
Are you familiar with the area that's known as the Central Business District?
I am.
Are you familiar or do you have knowledge with regard to the VFW building that's on Lake Ave.?
I do.
The property across the street at 637 Lake Ave. that is currently a vacant lot?
I do.
Do you have any knowledge as to prior use of that lot?
I have knowledge of the use of the lot going back to when I arrived in town as a resident, and when I started buying property here, so that would be coming back to 2000.
And can you describe for the board, your knowledge?
It was always a parking lot, open to, to the public. For, hey, I parked there myself over the past 19 years, many, 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 many times, probably exclusively when I go to the downtown. At times when the lot wasn't attended, I parked there and rolled the dice and took the risk and hoped that that would be okay with whomever was in charge. I didn't ask at certain times. And most of the times, I paid to park in the lot, and I'm not a member of the VFW. I work at it myself, so I have no association with the VFW.
No further questions?
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Siegel? When you said you paid to park there, were you paying an attendant?
Yes.
And you said you parked there on a consistent basis?
I would say multiple times a month for 19 years.
And sometimes you said you didn't pay, and sometimes you did. I would assume that depending on the day of the week and the time of the day, it was manned and.
Correct. If it wasn't manned, I had no one to pay, so I pulled the car in and did my business.
Do you remember if there was any signage or anything that talked about what that lot was and who owned it and what the rights were or anything?
I do remember that there was some signage. There was, my recollection is that there was signage stating that it was a VFW lot associated with the VFW, and payment was required.
Was there a self-payment system ever with that, do you remember?
I never recall a self-payment system. There may have been, but I don't recall it.
Was there any signs that denoted that if you did park there without consent, it would be towed your car?
I don't recall specifically a sign stating that your car would be towed. There may have been, there may not have been, I just don't recall it.
Any questions from the board?
Outside of parking there to do your business, have you ever attended any event there where you parked there?
At the VFW?
Yes, sir.
One time, I did attend an event at the VFW. They had a, a presentation of work planes and military artifacts that were set up on first and second floor, and you got to walk through and see the different exhibitions and memorabilia from various times in military history. So I went to that event, and I parked in the lot.
Was it free there?
I don't recall. That was one of the times where it was free, I don't recall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Board professionals? Any questions from the general public or Mr. Raffato? Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand, sir. You swear affirming testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name to the record and spell your last name.
U-C-V, spelled with two Es.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, can you please tell us your, can you please tell us your affiliation with the VFW and your knowledge of the VFW building and the lot across the street?
My affiliation is, I'm a member, I pilfered position from commander, senior vice, junior vice, trustee, and general members. I've done every job in the VFW that I've ever done.
And when did you begin after the VFW?
I would say around 2003, 2004.
You have knowledge of the parking lot across the street?
Yes, I do.
And how is that utilized, that parking lot?
It's used for parking.
For VFW and the general public?
And the general public, yes.
And that was since you began there in 2003, 2004, am I correct?
No, you're not correct.
Okay, correct me.
It was used for general public parking long before I was a member there.
Okay. And your knowledge is based upon Asbury Park, your knowledge of.
My knowledge is based upon going to VFW archives where I've seen pictures of a booth, a portable booth on wheels at the entrance to the parking lot.
You've seen pictures, Mr. Reed, is that what you said? Or you've seen?
In the archives, yes. Picture of a booth on a little trailer, parked at the entrance of the parking lot. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for the board?
Do you know if that booth was for private use, so the VFW brought it over if they had a special event or something, or was it a booth that they brought over so they could sell parking to the general public?
I can't answer that. All I can tell you is that the booth was on wheels, so it was portable, and was able to move under the parking lot to our garage.
So it wasn't always collecting money for that particular parking lot, it was just occasionally? Is that what you mean, Mr. Reed, by you saying that there's a booth on wheels? Why wouldn't it be there permanently all the time?
I don't understand the question.
What, you're saying the booth was there occasionally, right? That they would bring out the booth? So why was the booth only there occasionally?
I did not say it was there occasionally. I said it was portable, it was on wheels. The booth was for my tenure there, so I don't know if it was occasionally or not.
I see.
I just know that it was there.
Okay. But in your tenure there, you saw the parking lot being used by the public and the VFW?
I managed the parking lot.
You managed the parking lot?
Yes.
And how many, how many events would you say the VFW would have on a, on a weekly or monthly basis?
On a monthly basis, I would say two to three.
Two to three.
And Saturday.
And would the VFW, if they had an event, they would take precedent with the parking lot so it was reserved for their guests?
It wasn't reserved.
It wasn't?
First come, first served. There's just no way that we could tell if a person was coming to our met or was going downtown somewhere. He comes to the parking lot, he collects your money, and you go where you want to go.
I see. So it wasn't specifically for people coming into the VFW hall?
It was meant to be, but we were not in a position to question each and every person that came there. That wouldn't be proper.
I see. Any further questions from the board? Board professionals? Anyone from the general public or Mr. Raffato? Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Jamal.
Please raise your right hand, sir. You swear affirming testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name to the record.
Douglas Jamal, J-E-M-A-L.
Thank you.
Mr. Jamal, can you please tell me your affiliation with Jamal's National Guard Armory?
I bought the building approximately two years ago.
And buying the building, though, isn't your first knowledge of Asbury Park, downtown Asbury Park, is it, am I correct?
No, it's not.
You have a long time knowledge of Asbury Park, am I correct?
I worked this corner of Cookman and Bond, the former Tomacan store in 1960.
Oh, my goodness.
Go back a long time, and I parked in that lot, and I had a '55 Chevy that I bought in Daytona Beach, Florida for $500. I drove it back to Asbury Park, it had no heater in it. I didn't know you needed a heater, it was $500. I paid $25 a month to the store. So the corner store, it used to be a Tomacan, it was like a John's Bargain store, it's a discount store, so I worked there. And I used to park my car right on the corner of that lot in 1959, and it was 25 cents a day to park the car all day. My license plate was FPR189, a Jersey plate, I remember it, I'm 76 years old, and my license, driver's license number was 4759111.
Impressive.
You got three speeding tickets in New Jersey in those days. They gave you what they call a red license. So when officers stopped you and they saw someone with a red license, that's your last chance, because after that, you're getting your license suspended. So that's, that's my memory, and I worked on the board wall.
You're not going to have anybody dispute that on this board.
But I worked on the board also in 1960, a place called Empire Galleries, 825 Woodward. So I have a strong affiliation in Asbury Park. I've been down to Jersey Shore, and I love the Jersey Shore. In 1966, I had my first daughter. She was born February 22nd, Washington's birthday. I didn't have a pot to piss in or a window to throw it out of, thinking that this is my destiny. And I've been there for 53 years, and my mother is close to 100 years old. She lives in Dill, I comes here every single weekend. But I love to work, and I love the shores. I needed a job Saturday and Sunday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So I ended up buying some property in Asbury and Oak Ridge. So that's why I'm here.
Well, welcome, Mr. Jamal, and thank you for that story. It really gives us a whole viewpoint of your long attendance of Asbury Park.
I would put for my age.
But you remember that parking lot going back to 1960, paying a parking, am I correct?
I do.
All the questions, I hope, I still have. I'm going to show you what's been marked as A2 for identification. And looking at this, am I correct? You understand this as a lease that had been entered into in December 2015 between the VFW and the Tows, am I correct?
That's correct.
So back in 2015, there was actual leasing agreement with regard to parking on that particular parking lot, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's your knowledge based upon being the principal of the entity that owns that property today, correct?
Correct.
And how do you take a look at what's been marked as A3 for identification, am I correct, as a parking lease for that same parking lot, December 2017, between the VFW and a natural gas company, am I correct?
Correct.
And you have knowledge of that with regard to your ownership of the property?
Yes, sir.
Knowledge of the property. All the questions?
Mr. Jamal, you own the VFW building and the VFW parking lot, correct?
Yes, I do.
Your intention is to renovate the building, correct?
That's the interesting part about me. I really, well, if you want to know what the whole master plan was, candidly, I would like, I'd like to combine it with four of them if I possibly could make a deal with them and, you know, do something dramatic on that quarter.
And my understanding, I, correct me if I'm wrong, was that you were going to put in some type of residences in the, in that building, is that correct?
It was a thought of mine. I have, I have not decided yet what I'm going to do. I'm a rolling stone.
Well, you're not gathering any moss.
The plan is, let the plan be the plan. It's not really, if things change and environments change and ideas change. environments change, and ideas change, and the nice part about what I have and what I've developed in my life is I have the ability to make those changes on a dime and give 10 cents change.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is if you had intentions of putting residences in that particular, on that site of that building, would you not need the parking?
I certainly think you might need the parking, I really believe that parking sometimes could be a hindrance as well, because I think what you have in Asbury is a micro-city, and people become, you know, they live, working and playing in the same area, look, there's certainly a shortage of parking in Asbury Park, there's no one that's gonna deny that, they sound a little crazy, but I'm not that crazy, it's hard to park on, you know, all weekends in Asbury Park, and you would need parking, so it could be an ancillary parking, a parking that could possibly be put up on that site, all these things are open for discussion, but at the present time, I think, I believe what we're here for tonight is the VFW site is the VFW site, the parking garage across the street from that is not part of VFW, it's not a combined lot, they're two separate lots, I happen to have the pleasure of speaking to some fellows from the VFW that were here way before I was, and those two sites were bought two separate times, so I imagine that's pretty interesting that they're not even saying...
So they weren't bundled together when you purchased?
They were bought, but, but VFW bought that, they did not buy those two sites together, VFW, they're not part of VFW building.
But you did though, correct?
They're so, they're pretty separated.
But when you purchased those sites, you purchased them together, correct?
I bought what they had, I bought what they had, I bought what they had, I had the asking price, I did not negotiate a dollar, and candidly...
I appreciate that.
No, and there was no negotiations involved, there was no due diligence involved, there was none involved, other than I wanted to help the VFW because they wanted, their attendance has been dropping, and it was for sale, and since then, I've let the VFW stay there for free, as a matter of fact.
I understand that.
I'm gonna continue to stay there, so I'm a good neighbor, I'm a good citizen, I care a lot about the veterans, it's, it's a deep emotional thing for myself, and...
So right now, you really, you really don't have a plan for those sites?
I don't have, I don't have a planning agenda at the present time, like I told you a couple minutes ago, I really thought that the site could be put together with the Corvo site, and possibly the Brando site, you really have something very dramatic to put on that corner, and I like doing big dramatic developments, if I can, if I can, I'll settle for what I have.
Okay. Mr....
We'll go.
Are there separate deeds for the lot and the building itself, or is it just one deed?
They're two separate lots and plots.
So two separate deeds?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
But even if they're not, because they're identified as separate lots, they are separate lots, often somebody will buy multiple lots, do it under one deed, under one entity, but they're identified as separate lots, irrespective.
Okay, but they're two deeds, that's all, that's all I asked, two deeds, the entity.
Mr. Jamal, you said that you don't really have a plan for the VFW building, do you have a plan for the VFW lot, so what's your intention with that?
Not at the present time.
Why are you here then?
So I dare not conform to having a clear parking...
To have it used as a public parking, that's what I'm asking.
Any further questions from the board, for Mr. Jamal?
Do you know if there was ever any building or any structure on that piece of land?
There was.
There was?
There was, and I just found out tonight that there was, I found out from George, and Henry Vicaro knocked a concrete wall building down, and I don't remember it, because it's, like I said, I go back to 1950, it's so close back before I was there, but if you look at it, there look, there's a concrete need wall...
Right.
And a great elevation at that lot, so it really makes sense, there had to be at one time, and I defer to the Asbury Park historians of what existed, was certainly at one time, there was a building there, what happened to the building, I really don't know, but one of the gentlemen in the back said that they remember that Henry Vicaro knocked that building down years ago, I know Henry, I should have asked him, but that just came up tonight over light discussion.
Well, welcome to town, we're happy to have developers with big ideas and big dreams here, I'm sure you're well aware that we've been growing very quickly as a micro-city, I would call us a real city.
Micro's better.
Is it?
Because when you're real, you have real problems, when you're micro, you have micro problems.
Oh, I see, well...
You want the small problems, you don't want the big problems.
I'm sure I could learn, I'm sure I could learn a couple of things from you, Mr. Jamal, I look forward to sitting down and, and learning about marketing from you, I'm sure I could learn a couple of things, but no, honestly, it's, it's nice to meet you, but it's nice to, to meet people who are moving in town and having big ideas and wanting to invest in their property and making them as big and great as possible, you, you have to understand our responsibility here, and the very narrow framework that we are working within today. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for showing up today.
I might, I might also add, when we did have the parking lot open, we had a, we had a heavy-handed toll company there, every single person that got a ticket and a fine was refunded their money, it was 23 of them, so I just wanted to let you know that, two of them said, "We don't want it back," because we did park illegally, I said, "I wanna give it to you back."
I mean, this is just...
I just wanna clear that heavy-handedness that existed last year, 14 months ago, which I felt was...
So this is just in the last year?
Yeah.
I also just wanna clarify, because I wanna hear it from you, your attorney interrupted when I was asking the question, and I just wanna make sure that I understand, if we were to grant your request today, what is your intention for use of this lot, is it to be a standalone parking lot?
Yes, it is.
Any further questions from the board? Board professionals? Any questions from the general public or Mr. Raffado?
Just two quick questions, Mr. Jamal, I'm Fred Raffado here on behalf of the City of Asbury Park, Mr. Alonso, is there any written arrangement or lease agreement right now that you have with the VFW regarding the parking lot?
Just a handshake.
And I understand that the lot itself is chained off, do you know where the VFW members park right now?
They, they don't park in that lot, that lot's closed.
You have questions?
Any further questions from the general public for Mr. Jamal? Thank you, Mr. Jamal.
If I could have two minutes, I may have just one more, I don't wanna pile on the testimony, I think there's been a lot disowned, but I, if you, I could just have two minutes, one witness and see what happens.
You have your two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
A second.
7:46 PM, Daniel Harris?
Here.
Eric Gallofo? Oh, I'm sorry.
He's recused.
Brittany Ashman?
Here.
Melia Chungalolo Nestor?
Here.
Stephanie Henall?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Chris Adeloni?
Here.
Chris Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Garrus?
I have one more witness, Mr. Parisi.
Please raise your right hand, sir. No, you don't have to stand up, that's fine, do you swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Louis Perisi.
I'm sorry?
Louis Perisi.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi, you're familiar with the VFW building and all set of parking lots across the street here in Asbury Park, am I correct?
Yes, I am.
And can you please describe for the board, you're familiar, Aaron, with that parking lot in VFW?
I think that the VFW first became involved with the, that property in the early turn of the century when we purchased it, and I forget the purchase price for that, so that we can include that as part of our realty, Aaron.
And you're familiar with how that parking lot was utilized, am I correct?
Yes, at the time that it was purchased, when we got here, there was just a cement, a dirt parking lot, and it had a structure, four by, cement block structure, maybe four by six high, and we had that removed, because it was covered.
How long has the VFW hall been there, Mr. Parisi?
Early turn of the century, when the VFW became involved and purchased it.
So when you say, like, early turn, like, 1910?
Oh, no, no, this century, the 20th century, and I would say in 2003 or 2004, when I and George Reed and other offices of the VFW became involved with an active government of the VFW.
And before that, it was utilized as a formal rent, am I correct?
The building was an armory, and I think it was purchased after the 1950s or 1960s, when it became private property of the VFW.
And before that, it went from around the 1920s?
It was a National Guard armory, I guess.
So when was it changed to a parking then? I'm confused on the dates now.
I guess in the early turn of the century.
So 2000?
2003, 2004, thereabouts, when we had that...
You missed, I'm not answering your question.
I, I think we're getting a little confused.
You asked, specific question was, when, when was the lot across the street turned into a parking lot?
I'm not aware of that one term, but when George Reed and I became involved with the governance of the VFW, we spent some money, I think $11,000, to clean out that parking lot and to pave it, so that we could utilize it for parking.
What year is that?
Early turn of the century, I would say 2003 or 2004.
So prior to that, it was a dirt parking lot?
A dirt parking lot with a structure, a concrete structure, concrete blocks, perhaps four, four by six feet high in the center of that parking lot.
And what was that used?
What it was used at the time, I think, for parking, or as paved parking, that was before our involvement with the VFW in Asbury Park.
But that was your understanding, that it was a dirt parking lot?
It was, yes.
And that structure was used for the tenant?
Yes.
Do you have any parking agreements with the city when you used, operated your parking lot in 2003?
With the city of Asbury Park?
Or anyone?
No, I think that at one time, we did charge a fee for the gas company, they had, I think, two or three lots reserved for them.
But that's not with the city, though?
No, that was with the VFW, because we had taken, as far as I know, control of that piece of property.
Wait, so, was it easement, what?
So the gas company utilized that lot, and you had a lease agreement with that one agreement for that to park vehicles on that lot?
I see. Did you ever have an agreement with the city then?
With the city of Asbury Park?
Yes, how, how did you operate it as a parking lot? Any kind of agreement?
I don't know that they had the agreement, but when we took over the management of the VFW, we also took over responsibility for the maintenance of that property, the removal of the current structure there, that was, that was preventing cars to move in and out freely.
What was that concrete structure you keep referencing, what was that, Mr. Parisi?
It was a presence of entrance for parking cars there, they had an entrance, and paved parking was used for that lot, at which time the structure was sort of a con, dirt road, it wasn't really paved, it didn't have any car lines, just a concrete, just a dirt pavement, with the center of that, with an entrance where people paid a fee to park in that area.
I see.
But it was on a dirt road, there were no parking lanes for the cars, there wasn't a...
What, the lot itself was dirt?
Yes, it was.
And that was available to the public, or to the VFW, or to whoever wanted to park there, could park there?
I assume that we had responsibility for the maintenance of that, care of that, also to, to, and in order to pay for the maintenance, we did charge a fee for it, I'm sure that the city was aware of that, because the signage was clearly indicated that there was a fee for the parking, the VFW parking.
Did you make the agreement with Taka for them to allow them, the Taka restaurant customers to use that lot?
When you said that I do it, it was not during my reign as the commander of that post, I don't know.
But you acknowledged that Taka utilized that lot?
Yes, yes, of course, yes.
And also Preston Crumble, they utilized that lot too?
Yes, he also had use of that dumpster that he had in that area, and did have one use of that parking, he was able to park his car right in the dumpster.
So you're just aware of it, but you weren't involved with these agreements that were made with the Preston Crumble and with Taka?
When I was the commander of the post, I did, was involved with the agreement with the, the Preston Crumble, with the fee that he paid for the month for the use of that dumpster, and the use of that one, one...
So typically, the VFW would lease this lot?
Yes, to Preston Crumble.
But to anybody that you could?
At that time, when it was feasible to have someone maintaining, closing the building, and having a, a tenants there to take the fee.
And you remember that from 2003, 2004, when you stayed?
Starting, yes, from that time, I think it was.
And what, what year did you leave approximately that position?
I left as a commander there maybe four or five years ago.
Okay.
Sir?
Go ahead.
Okay, so did you have permits with the city to operate as a parking lot back when it was dirt?
Certainly, the signage was clear, the police were dearly members of passing by, they knew of our presence there, they knew of the use of that, because the signage was very clear, we knew the police personally, they, at least to my heart, they never approached me to express any concern that we should not be doing this on our property.
So, so basically, you did not have a permit to run that parking lot?
A formal permit, I don't know whether we ever saw it once or had it.
In 2003, I'm sorry, read it.
One at a time.
I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
No, we're good, we got a follow-up to know.
In 2003 and 2004, when you took it over, you said you paved the lot, that's correct, is that the timeframe, the correct timeframe?
Yes.
Around there? When you did that, was it principally used for public parking, or was it principally used for private parking for the VFW and whoever you chose to lease it to?
Well, obviously, we could not use it continually for public parking unless we had someone in attendance, it wasn't worthwhile for us to use someone here full-time, but the gates closed to prevent the parking, so that for most of that time, I don't think that it prevented anyone from parking there freely.
But for your personal use, not what other people chose to do it, if somebody chose to park there and they weren't supposed to, but from your purposes as, as the commander of the VFW, was it primarily for public use, or primarily, I think what you're saying is it was primarily private?
Well, obviously, if we had an affair, rental for our building during the evening, we would have someone in attendance there to make sure that only those using our facility would, would have access to it.
Okay, thanks.
But public people also were allowed to park in that lot, there's paved parking for the public, am I correct?
Yes. Recently, the, the, the sign indicates this is not public parking, that I think that for the most part, we have a commander now that insists that it not be used unless it has to be specifically our approval.
But going back to 2003, 2004, when it was paved, you indicated there was signage allowing for paved public parking, right?
Yes, only because we had spent, I think, $11,000 of the year to clean that building, that brick, that blocks down, paved the building, have the car, the car lines drawn and so on, we paid, I think, over $11,000 to have that.
And in off times, it was locked up, I think you said, there was a gate, there used to be a gate, was it locked?
Well, sometimes we did have a gate around it, but that wasn't always the feature that, but I think the signage is quite clear now, that it's VFW parking, our recent commanders have made that clearly, and both entrances, entrance and exits are closed, so that they can open freely with your hand, but they are physically not accessible.
And that's most recent, correct?
Yes, it is, that was in the past three, four years.
You've referenced signage a couple of times, did you put, do you remember putting signage up when you paved and took over in the circa 2003 timeframe, and do you remember what that signage said?
There is a sign of the, on the Lake Avenue and right on the corner over there, there is a sign that is a VFW parking lot, I believe, and I think the entrance, the main entrance clearly has a sign as the VFW parking.
But that's just recently, I think Russell is asking, was there, in, when you were commander, was there signage then, Mr. Parisi?
There is a sign on the building lot right now on the corner, how recently, I would say at least four or five, five years, the sign has been put up to indicate that it's VFW property.
Any further questions for Mr. Parisi?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, wait, 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 any questions from the board professionals? Any questions from either the general public or Mr. Raffado?
Mr. Parisi, just a couple of quick questions, you indicated that the signage was clear, I wrote that down from your testimony. You indicated that the signage was clear, I wrote that down from your testimony. I just want to make sure that I understand the timeline, because you indicated that the property had a dirt area and then it was paved sometime around two thousand three, two thousand and four. So prior to two thousand and five, do you recall what this, whether there was any signage and if so, what the signage said?
At that time, it was just a dirt, dirt area, and it had a, that building, that entrance in the center, four by six, and it locks and we paid to have that removed, have the area covered, paved over and had car lines drawn so that it can be used more reasonably.
Do you recall whether there was any signage that advertised that the lot was open to the public for general use for parking?
No, I don't think there was ever a sign indicating that it was used, used for public parking, I don't think that it was.
And you indicated that when the VFW held events there, that sometimes the property would be chained off or?
Yes, we haven't, someone in attendance to make sure that only those using the, the event that we were having in the building is used that with a certain fee, and if others in the area wanted to use it, they would be able to pay that same fee for parking about nine or ten to, to hold maybe thirty, thirty-five cars in that area.
Do you recall whether the VFW ever towed any vehicles from that lot?
I think there was a sign that vehicles could be towed, and I understand that our very diligent commander once or twice had the need to really call for someone to take the car out and have it towed away, and I think there was a sign indicating that cars could be towed and they did not.
If they did not, okay?
They did not use it.
So I just want to make sure that I understand your testimony as well. So the towing, was that if the owners of the car didn't pay, or was that if the owners of the cars were not there for a VFW function?
Well, if the car was there and could not, the owner could not be identified and they did not pay the attendance, the attendant did not receive any fee for it, obviously, I think they were mazin' on rare usage, maybe one, maybe two, I don't think in my memory there are more needs than one or two calls to the, to have the car towed.
And to your recollection, when the premises for the parking lot was rented pursuant to the lease agreements to either Taka or New Jersey Natural Gas, did they obtain exclusive rights to the entire lot, or were there certain portions of the parking lot that were designated to them?
Yes, the, the gas company had the first two lots and the entrance on the Lake Avenue side, they were, they were reserved, and they knew that for the, those working for the.
And was the lot available, were used by anyone other than those two entities?
Yes, of course, they had, and a chance and safety was expected for those that would use that if they did not have prior agreement for its use.
And approximately, what was the timeframe that you're referring to, do you recall?
Well, obviously, only if what we could keep an attendant at the, at the place, and obviously, there wasn't, it wasn't worthwhile to keep an attendant there many times during the day, and it was, I guess, for the most good street parking, if you got there during the day and there was not an attendant there, there was no way for you to pay for the parking.
But your knowledge was back to two thousand three, two thousand four?
That's the time when I think that I became involved with the maintenance of that lot and the VFW management.
Any further questions, one second, Mr. Parisi, any further questions for Mr. Parisi from the general public? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, do you have a case that you would like to present? Michelle?
That was the board, Freda Raffeta from Anselm, Erin, uh, City Attorney, Representative, Ms. Alonso.
Thank you.
Do you swear her firm's testimony, if there are any proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and your affiliation with the city.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment, I'm the acting zoning officer currently, and back in August and September of two thousand eighteen, and I'm a licensed professional planner with the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Ms. Alonso, can you please advise the board as to the background of this matter and why you issued a notice of violation to the applicant for the use of the parking lot?
Certainly, back in, I believe, August, it came to my attention that signs went up in the VW parking lot that was advertising paid for parking, and that the VHW signage was gone, and that there was advertising about using an app to park in the parking lot. I went through our city records, there was no transfer of title, I found out from the tax assessor that it was sold, and I reached out to the entity that had bought it, and I spoke to someone, um, someone from Jamal's company, and I sent him a follow-up email. I, I had a conversation with them saying, we have no records, but this parking lot is a paid for parking lot, that it was, our records showed that it was accessory to the, to the VW lot. He asked me to put in an email, I did, I asked in the email if you have any documentation that this, that may be missing from our files, that this parking lot was a principal use for parking, he sent it to me. They reached out shortly to Mr. Karas, who, you know, told me that it was incorrect, but thirty days had passed and there was no documentation provided, so I issued a summons for the use of the lot that was not permitted, and subsequently, after that, Ms. Van Wagner, who had come back from her medical leave, Ms. Van, Van Wagner, as everyone knows, is the former zoning officer, also issued, issued a summons for the signage that went up. So that is basically why we're here today, Mr. Karas, on behalf of the client, is asking for an interpretation and a certificate of nonconformity, but I'm not here to dispute that it's a parking law, because we all know it's a parking law, it's used as a parking law, but that my standing based upon my documentation and lack of documentation of it being parking as principal use, is that the parking is accessory to the VW hall, that the parking is intended for members of the VW, we have no records of it being a paid for parking lot, the VW is still in use, and that the members, it was assumed needed a place to park, especially since many tend, tend to be, tend to be older, and my backing that up is that the two thousand two CBD redevelopment plan on the map called Round Four Land Use only lists two parcels, and the whole plan is quasi-public, the VW hall and the parking lot. And a quasi-public use, while not defined in our zoning ordinance, but is in the Harvey Moskowitz, New Little Street Book of Development definitions that planners use often, is a use owner operated by nonprofit religious elementary institution and provide educational, cultural, recreational, religious, or similar types of programs. I believe that describes the VW hall, and when this redevelopment plan was being written in two thousand two, or this is two thousand, it was written in two thousand two, adopted in two thousand three, it was taken into account that this lot, whether it was used at parking at the time or not, was to be used for VW use. I would like this map marked with evidence.
Ms. Alonso, you're saying there's nothing in the files that designated this lot was for any use in particular, other than an accessory use to the VFW hall?
Actually, the property file for this is empty.
It is?
Yes, and they have, but so our records, our property files go back to approximately the early eighties, so even some of the testimony you heard, even if this lot began as a parking lot in the early two thousands, we would have had documentation of it because if it was repaved, if it was restripped?
Right.
That all requires a zoning permit.
But you can't go to the construction office and ask if they have one because they don't have any files, that date back to that timeframe?
Well, truthfully, I would have to go to Public, to Public Works and ask for that.
Okay.
But as again, like our, our record, I believe, you know, everyone knew this was the VW lot, it had signage that said VW, that was just recently removed, and also...
Why is there no transfer of title of this particular lot?
Because there was a failure to obtain one. But, so even so, even though there, there's evidence that there was a loose at Taka and, or, you know, other entities, our office had no knowledge of that, and even though she's not here and it's hearsay coming out of my mouth, Ms. Van Wagner.
I can't cross-examine this statement.
There was not, in our office?
Sustained.
There was no, there was no knowledge that this was current?
Unless this witness has personal knowledge, she can't testify, but other people have knowledge of it in her office.
This witness, myself, as the director of planning, who has been here for four years, has had no knowledge that there was paid for parking happening at this lot, and it could be because of some of the testimony today, sometimes there was someone collecting money, sometimes there wasn't, I myself have never seen anyone in that lot collecting money, so I have no evidence, both personal and documented, that shows that this was a paid for parking lot.
Which, what kind of permits would the city, would a business need to operate as a public parking lot?
Well, this, in the city in general, it depends what zone you're in, because if you're in general zone and you're permitted.
For this zone?
This zone, so as was testified, this parking is principal use, at one point was permitted as redevelopment plan, it was amended in two thousand seven to eliminate it, but then I put in an amendment three years ago that permits it as an interim use with approval by the council and the planning board. And I, one of the reasons I did that is because another entity, of course, in the downtown has from multiple residential properties provide parking off-site for those units, and it has been accepted by the board, has accepted in the redevelopment plan that you can provide parking for your use on a separate lot.
I guess my question more is, what documentation would the business need, like a zoning permit or?
A zoning permit, but also if this was being run by an entity as a principal parking lot, there would be a business certificate, and there is no business certificate for a paid for parking lot.
Thank you.
Ms. Alonso, read it. Okay, because it's the VFW out of respect for these gentlemen who served our country in the veteran of foreign wars, not VW.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So let's just please refer to them out of respect for them. Um, one, you said, are you saying that it's the city's negligence that this was operated like that?
Not at all, because it would have to come to my knowledge, I have no knowledge of there being anyone collecting money in that parking lot, and that it not being used by VFW attendees when they go to the hall to park there, because I was under the assumption based on the signage, the use, and what is in and not in the file and the redevelopment plan, that this parking lot is accessory to the VFW.
Would, would that have to be renewed yearly?
I'm sorry, what?
Would a permit have to be renewed yearly for that operation?
No, a, well, business license, yes, the zoning permit, no, and there is no zoning permit for parking as a principal use.
Okay, what do the people have who park elsewhere down by the beachfront, all the parking lots down there?
Those parking lots are approved by the council and by the planning board as interim uses, so all of those have zoning certificates and went through the full process.
Did the owner of this property go through that full process and get an interim?
Yes, and I had advised, I advised his attorney, yes, and that the municipality welcomes it, because, um, and I have to say, there is only one deed for both these properties now, they're both under one deed.
Originally, what, that was, it was two deeds?
It was separate, but now there's one. But I also want, um, let me make sure I went through all my notes, because the other concern that I have is that the hall is still functioning, I believe there was a big, a big event there, you know, over the.
Question is, what are concerns are or not, or whether or not a certificate of nonconformity can be issued based upon the store's use?
I must agree with Mr. Karas.
Then I will restate myself, it is clear that the principal use of the quasi-public use of the hall has not been abandoned, and the parking lot that goes with it thus should not be abandoned, because if the hall is still functioning and the hall is still having events, where are those people to park? And, and so now I want to ask the question, where are the attendees of the hall parking now? Shouldn't they have the parking lots to park in as prescribed in the redevelopment plan? And has been the tradition since the hall and the parking lot were together?
So that's your reasoning behind the interim parking approval?
The interim parking approval was also based upon, the test, there was testimony at the last meeting in December that the, um, VFW was going to vacate at the end of the year, and they're, they're still there, because if, if the applicant, the owner is, doesn't know what he wants to do yet with the property, and if the property is vacant, and the, um, and he wants to use the lot for parking because parking is needed in the downtown, we're open to that. Now, clearly, he's going month to month with the, with the VFW, and I think there might not need to be another type of parking arrangement then, if he can demonstrate that he has excess parking after accommodating the needs of the hall and the members, then that's something that should be discussed with council, and that's why that provision is in there for some of these unique situations where we can find a best fit for the parking with the levels of the downtown.
You, you mentioned, Ms. Alonso, that you, you told the applicant's attorney that he had the ability to go to the council and the planning board to rightfully get this designated as a general parking lot, what was the attorney's response?
The attorney's response is that he had concern, more into his arguments tonight, is that the parking lot is not really accessory because it's on a, a separate tax lot, but I disagree with that because the redevelopment plan, this one, Main Street, definitely waterfront, talks to accessory parking beyond another lot, and he also had stated, I should look at the ordinance, our ordinance has a section that states that, well, that you can have your parking in a business district six hundred feet from your principal use, and it could be on a separate tax block and lot.
Can you read that ordinance aloud right now?
I just have it.
Please.
And I can, if, actually, do you have yours, Chris?
Donna, do you have it?
Uh, not right.
If you give me the.
The zoning ordinance, on the STD.
Here, I, right, I need, the one I sent him. Thirty dash fifty-nine point eight, location of parking areas, all off-street parking shall be located upon the same lot where the use occurs, however, in business and industrial zones, parking facilities may be located within. However, in business and industrial zones, parking facilities may be located within 600 feet, measured along adjacent streets. Or part of the off-street parking requirement for non-residential uses may be met with the provision of off-street, off-site parking located within 1,000 feet of the lot where the use occurs, measured along adjacent streets. So that's just part of it, but that's the gist of it, that you can have your parking requirement on a separate tax block and lot. And it has occurred before in this redevelopment area where some of the residential parcels here, their parking requirement is not on the same parcel.
What's that statute again? Thirty code?
Thirty dash fifty-nine point eight, at the zoning code. And this was the zoning code, not the redevelopment statute. But I'm saying that, that let's say this parking lot occurred before the redevelopment plan, and it makes complete sense that they would be permitted to have their accessory parking lot across the street.
Is there anything further that you'd like to set forth to the Board at this time, Ms. Alonso?
Let me just take a quick look at my notes. Well, one of the things I wanted to state, because clearly, you know, talking, it may seem black and white, but that the applicant is talking about it being a parking lot. Again, I acknowledge that it's a parking lot, and my stance that it's accessory parking lot. But if this Board were to conclude differently that principal parking was there before, I would make the argument that the way it was proposed before Mr. Jamal shut it down was an intensification of that with a parking app. Because you heard testimony, whether for right or wrong, sometimes they collected money, someone testified there was a booth that rolled away, there was money being collected without the city's knowledge. It was one thing, but as I said, I have never seen money, a booth, people collecting money there. There's been some testimony here that people parked there when someone wasn't there. So clearly, that it was not old paid-for parking, and what was, had occurred in August was 24/7 paid-for parking. That's all I have, the franking.
Any questions for Ms. Alonso from the Board? One second. Any questions from the Board professionals for Ms. Alonso?
No.
No.
I have one.
One second. Cross-examination, Mr. Carras.
Thank you. Ms. Alonso, you made reference to, as remarked, as C2, section of the ordinance, thirty dash fifty-nine point eight, am I correct?
Yes.
And that is not the redevelopment plan, however, that is the general code, am I correct?
Correct.
And that is the land use code here, and that's where the park for all areas excepting the downtown and redevelopment areas, correct?
Correct.
And in this particular location, though, or this particular section, thirty dash fifty-nine point eight, it talks about accessory parking lots that can be utilized off-site, am I correct?
Correct.
But it requires, in order for that to be done, that application be made, approvals be obtained, am I correct? What's the last part of it?
Including municipal approvals, yes.
So I'm correct, so in order to have a parking lot utilized as an accessory use, there has to be municipal approvals to do that, am I correct?
In all cases.
Okay, do you have for me tonight, or for the Board, any documentation to reflect that that was in fact done for this parking lot, that it's accessory, it was deemed an accessory use, like either the parent council, the Board, anyone here in Asbury Park as an accessory to the VFW?
No.
Do you have any documentation, a single piece of paper, to reflect that that lot that we're talking about was deemed at any point in time accessory to the VFW building?
No.
So you're saying you want the documentation from the applicant here. What documentation then can be shown that it was not an accessory use? Is there any documentation that we can have?
But you know that you can't just flip to a new use.
Well, wait a minute. You've only been here in Asbury Park for four years, am I correct?
Yes.
You weren't here back in the 1960s, were you?
No.
You weren't here in the 1970s, were you?
Not in an adult capacity.
Do you know how the parking lot was utilized in the 1960s? Any personal knowledge?
No.
Do you have any personal knowledge how the parking lot was utilized in the 1970s?
No.
How about the 1980s?
No, but we have no documentation, and our documentation against-
Now, let me just ask you, personal knowledge?
No.
Do you have any knowledge how that parking lot was utilized in the 1990s?
No.
What about the year 2000?
No.
What about between the years 2000 and 2010?
No.
Do you dispute the testimony that was given by the officers, the gentlemen that are here from the VFW?
I don't dispute it, but-
Now, going back to the CBD code, when you look at the CBD redevelopment plan, it was enacted in 2003, am I correct?
Yes.
And the parking lot that we're talking about is in the CBD mixed-use district, am I correct?
Yes.
And under the CBD plan, it reflects specifically the uses that you can utilize in the CBD mixed-use district, am I correct?
Yes.
So when we take a look at what had been described as those permitted uses under the original plan, it has in there permitted principal use on the ground floor, am I correct?
Yes.
And it had in there in 2003, when the CBD plan was enacted, parking lots and structures, am I correct? Yes?
Yeah.
So in 2003, parking lots were permitted principal use in a CBD mixed-use zone, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's where this property is located, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it was amended in 2005, am I correct?
Yes.
And as it was amended, it indicated that you cannot use certain properties as principal permitted, or rather, as parking lots and structures, am I correct? So it was excluded from the CBD mixed-use district in 2005, am I correct?
Parking as principal use.
Correct?
Yes.
But as you heard in testimony tonight, you don't dispute that this parking lot was used as a parking lot, as a paid parking lot prior to 2005, am I correct?
I don't dispute that it, but I, whether it was done in a legal manner?
Well, are you familiar with the case, Andover Township versus Lake?
Why don't you refresh me?
It's eighty-nine New Jersey, Super 313, Appellate Division, nineteen sixty-five, where they talked about a nonconforming use, and whether or not a license or a certificate is necessary, or has any bearing upon a determination as to a certificate of nonconformity. Are you familiar with that case?
No.
Let me tell you what the holding is.
Did you brief that case for the-
I'm gonna tell you what the holding is.
Did you brief that case for us? Do we have that?
Brief it.
Yes, do we have that information before us?
Given you the, I gave you the site, I'm gonna read to you the holding unit also. It says, "The failure to obtain a license for the operation of a business as provided in hand ordinance regulating the conduct of such business does not adversely affect the status of the operator as a nonconforming user." Are you familiar with that? That next, do you dispute, though, that that is the law relative to whether or not you have a license or not, when taking into consideration whether to issue a certificate of nonconformity?
Can you read that again? She's not familiar with the case, so I don't think she can render an opinion on that.
Can you read it again, it's lovely.
The case of Andover Township versus Lake, eighty-nine New Jersey, Super 313, Appellate Division, nineteen sixty-five. The court states on page three seventeen, "Failure to obtain a license for the operation of a business as provided in hand ordinance regulating the conduct of such business does not adversely affect the status of the operator as a nonconforming user."
So basically, if I understand that correctly, Mr. Carras, if it's being operated as a nonconforming use, regardless of whether it has a permit or not?
A business license.
Whether or not it has a license or not-
Not, it's a nonconforming use.
But it still doesn't answer the question of whether or not it was a nonconforming use, is that correct?
Yeah, but whether or not a license was issued is immaterial to the determination.
So it's like being a squatter.
Yeah, if you're using it and you just don't have a license, whether or not you have a license doesn't affect the determination.
Regardless of the legality of it, though.
Exactly. If you look at the history, how it's been used, obviously, the facts that go into this certificate of nonconformity, history of use, continuation of use, how the lot has been utilized.
I see.
So whether or not there's a license imposition or not, doesn't matter.
However, it has, it is marked in the redevelopment plan as quasi-public.
And there's no definition for quasi-public.
It's well-known that paid-for parking is not quasi-public, that the definition-
Well, I don't know that. Where do you see it's not well-known that quasi-public is not a parking lot?
In the new Illustrated Book of Development definitions by Harvey Esmos.
That is not-
Let her answer the question, you've asked her a question, let her answer the question.
Is that planning on Asbury Park?
It's a common go-to when there is no definition in an ordinance.
Asbury Park, in your CBD redevelopment plan, also the land use ordinance, they have their own definitions, am I correct?
A few.
Wait, is there a parking lot definition in our ordinance? No, of course not. Okay. Is there, and there's no definition about quasi-public spaces?
No.
But there is a definition as to what is permitted in a mixed-use district, am I correct?
Yes, except that map also governs.
And the map also reflects this property's in the mixed-use district, am I correct?
Yes.
So property we're talking about is in the mixed-use district, and under the original redevelopment plan, it permitted parking lots and structures, correct?
Yes, but there is no documentation when this was adopted that this was a paid-for parking lot.
What documentation are you talking about?
About something in the file. We have zoning files, we have board files, and there's no documentation, which is not the norm.
But the files in Asbury Park, if I recall correctly, I don't think you have them before 1980, they're all destroyed, weren't they?
That's why I stated the early 80s. But this, when this lot has been operating for years with the sign VFW pressed-
Oh, well, you only noted four years ago.
No, I don't note it just four years ago.
Well, what personal knowledge do you have before four years ago, prior to four years ago, as to how this lot was operated?
I don't, I just spoke about the signage.
Well, what personal knowledge do you have of the signage on the lot prior to four years ago?
From what was there, and it was testified tonight that that signage has been there a while.
In 2003, what was the signage of it here?
I cannot answer, like, you know, that's an unfair question.
Because you don't know. But you heard testimony, it's had a lot of-
I heard testimony that it was used for the VFW members, sometimes money was collected, sometimes it was not, and that signage has been there since the beginning, that was testified to tonight.
And you didn't hear any testimony that the public was utilizing that lot?
I didn't hear any testimony that the public was utilizing that lot in a legal manner.
That was my question. Did you hear testimony, the public was utilizing that lot?
Yes.
When you say it was not being utilized in a legal manner, if it had been used as a parking lot from the 1950s to the present, that doesn't make it illegal, does it?
I did not hear testimony was being used as parking lots of the 1950s person.
From the 1960s, I'm sorry. You heard testimony was used from the 1960s all the way through today as a parking lot, as a public parking lot, correct?
Yes. No, I heard that was used as a parking lot.
But you also heard testimony from the officers from the VFW that it was utilized-
No, there was only one person who stated from the 60s to now, your client.
But you heard from 2003 from the officers of the VFW that it was utilized as a public parking lot, correct?
Which was when this redevelopment plan was adopted.
Right, and it was used as a public-
And it was listed as quasi-public.
You heard it was, this is my question, you heard testimony it was utilized as a public parking lot in 2003, even before, am I correct?
Was used for parking.
And you heard it was used as a, for public parking too, am I correct?
That was money sometimes exchanged-
Was that not made of public parking?
I don't know, you tell me.
Well, you don't know, am I correct?
No, no, I'm saying it like that because it's a contradiction. Because it's a contradiction because your client would like to use this to be paid for 24/7, and the members of the VFW-
Did you ever talk to my client how he wants to utilize a parking lot?
No, because I've spoken to you.
And I told you wanted, and I told you wanted to be used 24/7?
The use, but the use-
Did I ever tell you, wait, did I ever tell you this parking lot was gonna be used 24/7?
You wanted to-
Did I ever?
It's difficult because you might get, can you come up with this?
Is there, who did you have a discussion with that it was gonna be used 24/7 for this parking lot?
The parking operator.
Who is the parking operator?
I don't remember his name, he's one who had all the cars towed, he came to the counter.
Did you see him here tonight?
No.
So you don't know how-
The signage, the app, it all was for 24/7 parking. Your client put up signage without a sign permit.
That's a separate issue, we're talking about whether or not we're talking to a certificate of nonconformity. When you say it's an illegal use, if a use is continuing over time and the ordinance changes, which makes it a nonpermitted use, does that make the use illegal?
If there's no documentation that that use operated under proper ordinance and continues to operate, though, it's not legal per the zoning code or the redevelopment plan.
It makes it nonconforming, but not illegal, am I correct?
But, no, because here's the thing, maybe it was a paid-for parking lot before the hall acquired it, but when the hall acquired it, it became an accessory parking lot to the hall.
Well, you understand that this is a separate lot, am I correct?
Yes.
Than the VFW hall?
Yes.
They're not contiguous lots, am I correct?
No.
They're not adjacent lots, am I correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the Lockter doctrine of merger, am I correct?
Yes.
And that Lockter doctrine says that you can only have a merger of two lots if they're contiguous lots or adjacent lots, correct?
Yes, but they're only one deed.
So you agree with me that the lots do not merge for purposes of the law, am I correct?
They're not a lot in your town.
But you agree with me that these lots, as a matter of law, do not merge, am I correct?
They do not merge, they cannot merge.
They cannot merge.
Wait, I have a question for Jack. What does it mean if they're on the same deed?
It just means they use one doctrine versus two.
To describe the ownership.
Yeah, to describe the ownership, the fact that they're on one deed would not in any way make the lots merge because these are not contiguous lots under the doctrine of merging. These are separate lots, distinct, separated by a public street, so you can't merge. The fact that the attorneys just chose to use one deed for two descriptions doesn't make them merge.
But, Jack, whether or not they're merged is not really relevant to whether or not it's an accessory use or-
Or a nonconforming use.
That is correct. Well, when we look at accessory use, you're familiar with the definition of accessory use as defined in the code, am I correct?
Yes.
An accessory use, as it's defined in section thirty fifteen, as a use subordinated to and customarily associated with, or incidental to, the principal building or use on the same lot, am I correct?
Customarily, but then there's the provision that had marked into evidence that permits parking on a separate lot that can serve as the accessory parking to a principal use.
And if you, if there's an application that allows by the municipality, correct?
Yeah, but the application, that could be a zoning permit as well, yes.
And you're not, all the documentation you've seen, you've seen nothing to indicate that that lot, the VFW lot, was ever deemed an accessory use to the VFW building, am I correct? Am I correct?
I don't know, I don't know. I don't, I choose not to answer.
Can you direct a witness to answer my question?
Would you please answer his question?
Okay, I'll answer his question. I do not have the documentation that you're talking about. It's a provision of your argument of it being a nonconformity.
Do you look for documentation?
Of course.
And you couldn't find anything indicating this was ever deemed as an accessory, this parking lot to the VFW building, am I correct?
Yes.
So the question's up to you.
Mr. Carras, did Ms. Alonso, it's a bit, I'm confused, does it get an A number or a C number?
It's part of the, it only does- Oh, it may get a C, it's, the Board can take judicial notice of it, it's part of the municipal code. It's law, and so it's judicial notice, so a C, a C.
It's part of the CBD plan.
Whatever, it's still part of the law, a C, and that's for itself, so.
Are there any further questions from the general public for Ms. Alonso? Please, come up and state your name.
There are some questions, some questions, I'm testing.
Just state your name for the-
Barbara Jameson, President Commander of the VFW.
Robert Jameson, President Commander of the VFW Post 1333. My question to Ms. Alonso is that you said that you drove by several times and you never see no one collecting money. So, you're basing things on that you never see anyone collect money. Is that what you're saying?
I can only talk about myself because if I can't, as you heard, I'm not allowed to talk about other people who are not here.
But in your observation, you drove by and at times that you drove by, you never see money collected.
Yes.
So then, are you based, are you saying then it never has?
Based on my observation as a municipal employee in the zoning, in the department of zoning.
But your purpose was to go by to see where they're collecting money?
No, that was not my purpose.
But you made a statement saying that you must have-
Why would you, why would that be my purpose?
Because you stated the fact that you never seen someone collect money.
When doing municipal business in town-
Maybe the time that you came by, the parking lot wasn't being used as a, as a paid parking lot.
Exactly.
Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes. So that you, the VFW didn't use it all the time.
We may test, we testify, we may testify saying that we collect money, am I right?
You testified that you sometimes collect money, right?
But we do, that's the point that I'm trying to say, you just didn't see it happen.
I think you made your point, yeah.
She can answer.
Anyone else from the general public for questions to Ms. Alonso? State your name, please.
Identify yourself.
No, it's okay. Ernest Mignoli, 400 The Electron. Ms. Alonso, I don't live here, but I spend a lot of time in Good Avenue, and just coming into the middle of this, I'm not exactly sure. I happen to know-
You testified.
Are you, do you have a question?
Do you know that there are people that know, personally you can't think of, meaning the money collector, the towing company, etc. Are you aware of that?
I don't understand the question.
Okay, well, you just mentioned that you weren't sure who the person was at the lot collecting or-
Oh, yeah, you know, if I wasn't sure, I don't remember his name.
Okay.
Is that your question, Mr. Mignoli?
Okay, maybe you could be aware that I had lunch with him today. So if you want to know who it is and anything about it, if you'd like, you can ask me.
Okay, thank you.
Please come up and state your name.
It's Officer Valmar, 15 U. I'll find this fascinating, I'd just like some clarity as to what the actual issue is here. What are we hearing here?
That I believe, that I believe that this parking lot needs a planning board and a council.
This is interpretation, Mr. Valmar.
Interpretation.
We're trying to decide whether this was a nonconforming use or an accessory use to the VFW hall. So that's the issue. And it was denied for, for the current applicant to, or the current owner of the property to use it as a general public parking lot. Any further questions for Ms. Alonso?
Can I just follow up? Ms. Alonso, you indicated that-
You finished your cross-examining, I thought, Mr. Caris.
Followed up on one of the questions that was presented up here.
Okay.
Ms. Alonso, you indicated that you had driven by and you didn't see anybody collecting money, am I correct?
Darius Tomes.
Do you have notes to reflect the dates that you drove by?
Of course not, Mr. Caris.
The other dates that you drove by?
I can go back and I could surmise that all the times I've had to go into the downtown area, whether I went for business or I went to grab some lunch.
But you never made any notation, it's such an important thing that nobody was collecting money?
Why would I make notation about money collection when all this time I thought the parking lot was accessory to the VFW hall?
You thought it was accessory, but you don't have any documentation for that.
The one thing-
Already answered that question.
I do have in the principal block file a reference to the parking lot under the block and lot of the VFW hall. I do have that.
I'm sorry, what are you asking for?
I don't, she said she has a documentation over there.
Times?
701 Lake Avenue, Block 109, Lot 12. VFW post parking lot. The following construction is proposed: demolition of 4x8x10 structure, no utilities, parking lot booth. This was in '07. With the block and lot of the hall.
You need to, since you've testified from that one sentence, I see that, please.
And what was that?
I'm sorry, is that a construction permit? What is that?
Yes, it's a zoning sign off on a construction, you move it in.
I see.
And you said that the reference is the block and lot of the building, not the parking?
It says Block 109, Lot 12, which is Block 109, Lot 12.
Well, that's the old, this, so this is the VFW hall file.
So Block 109, Lot 12 is the VFW hall?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So, what they're talking about is knocking something down on the VFW hall, there's a small apartment on the VFW hall?
Leave that with the custom loading area.
Okay, good. But this makes reference to that block and lot, not across the street, correct?
Correct, that is in the main file. That's the only thing that I have that references VFW post parking lot. There's no other documentation.
But the reference to the block and lot is not to the parking lot across the street.
Yeah, but it's your witness.
But it's not to the parking lot across the street, it's to the VFW hall.
Your witnesses-
I think that's her point.
The witness is Louis Paris.
But just answer my question.
Or the signature.
But it's to that one lot, it's not to the one across the street, correct?
No.
Any further questions from the general public for Ms. Alonso? Please come up, state your name.
My name is Joe Williams, I'm a life member of the VFW, I'm also in the Capitol Phillets, I'm a trader there. I grew up in Asbury Park, I went to Bond Street School, I went to Asbury Park High School.
You could put your arm down. You don't have to testify.
Ask me a question.
And I would like to know if you know Mr. Jamal Beal at all?
No, I only know him through his attorney.
I know him for the last two years.
You're testifying, you're testifying. Just questions for the witness right now.
I would urge you to meet him, he's a great American.
No, no, you must ask a question.
I've asked, and I've asked-
Do you know he's a great American?
I've asked to meet him and I only dated me.
I'm finished, thank you.
Any further questions from the general public for Ms. Alonso? Thank you. Do you have anything to follow up with, Mr. Raffado, or are you done? Mr. Caris, back in your court.
I think all the testimony has been presented, I think this matter has summed up. The board has heard, obviously, significant testimony from a lot of different witnesses. Both general members of the public that are familiar with Asbury Park, going back, I know it's many years, people that have been here since 2000, people that are familiar with the property by law since 1960, and obviously heard of the gentlemen that are part of the VFW that serve our country and their testimony under oath. I don't think there's any question that this parking lot was utilized. Number one is a parking lot for quite a long period of time, and number two, it was used as a parking lot both for the VFW and also for the public. Now, the significant issue is whether or not it was utilized prior to 2005, 2003, when the CBD redevelopment plan was enacted, sorry, 2003. It allowed in the CBD to mixed-use district, and make, no question about this. This property is in the CBD mixed-use district. Look at the plan, that's where it is. In 2003, when the redevelopment plan was enacted, it stated that principal permitted uses are allowed in the CBD to mixed-use district. This is allowed to be a parking lot back then. So the issue is whether or not, when they amended the CBD plan in 2005, at that point in time, was it being utilized as a parking lot at that location? And all the testimony clearly reflects and indicates that it was. It was continually used as a parking lot, that's number one. And it was also continually used as a paid parking lot since at least 2003, if not beforehand. Now, when we look at the CBD code, it indicates parking lots and structures. It doesn't say that the parking lot has to be a paid parking lot. When you look at the CBD code, it talks about restaurants and bars and all other types of uses, galleries and whatnot. It doesn't distinguish between restaurants that are paid, or galleries where you pay, or bakeries where you pay, or bars where you pay.
We have to record objection from what Ms. Alonso was saying, you're stating-
About paving, because there's unpaved driveways.
P-A-I-D.
Oh, I thought you said paved, that's why I-
No, P-A-I-D. P-A-I-D. Apologize if I did not enunciate. But it doesn't distinguish between P, allows for parking lots. Either way, it was used both as a parking lot prior to 2005 when it was amended, also as a paid parking lot. Continued to do so up through the present when it was shut down as a result of Ms. Alonso's catch. The argument being made is that it is an accessory to the VFW building. However, there's not a single stitch of evidence before the board to indicate that at any point it was an accessory limited to that property. There's no documentation whatsoever. There's no resolution from the board, there's no zoning permit, there's no zoning certificate, there's nothing that indicates that it was accessory to the VFW building and limited as an accessory to that building. As indicated before, the lots don't merge. Under the lot production merger, these lots can never merge. They're separate. Consequently, they each have to have their own principal use. Principal parking lot use was permitted on this particular property. And when we look at the code definition for accessory use, it talks about accessory uses on the same lot. Again, these are two different lots. Now, I note that Ms. Alonso made reference to a code section that talks about having an accessory lot on a separate piece of property, but also-
I believe it was within 600 feet?
Within 600 feet, but also it's significant about that, it talks about in order to do that, you need approval from the municipality for that to be deemed as an accessory use. That was never done, so we don't have that. So there is nothing to indicate that this lot was ever deemed as an accessory use, even as defined by the code. Consequently, we do have a nonconforming permitted use on this property. Clearly, there's a parking issue in downtown, we're all aware of that. Here's 20-some parking space that can be utilized that have-
That's not the issue, Mr. Caris.
But they have been utilized for historically on this lot, and they should be allowed to be continued to be utilized as a parking lot. Thank you.
Mr. Caris, is there a reason why you haven't gone through the obvious channels?
Well, the plan of that, the only way to change this is to go before the mayor now-
But you understand they would welcome it as a parking lot?
Uh, no, not, there are certain conditions where they would look for it, that would not be one. So, it's not necessarily true, they can put conditions on that, which I understand they'd be looking for. And my client's not willing to do it.
Well, I'm not aware of what conditions those would be, maybe you can enlighten us.
I understand our purposes, well, I should be known for that. But as a matter of law, the way I interpret this and the way the testimony has been submitted, it's illegal, nonconforming. We don't need to go to the mayor's council to have that.
Thank you, Mr. Caris. Mr. Raffado, do you have a closing statement?
It's very brief. Members of the board, Ms. Alonso was very clear in her testimony that, in her opinion, this parking lot was an accessory use to the VFW hall located on the lot across the street. Without belaboring the issue any further, we're going to leave this issue to the sound discretion of the board based upon all the testimony that you heard this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to get some comments from the board. What is everybody thinking?
On reading one of the reports, it said that in either case, the burden of proof rests with the applicant to demonstrate that the previous owners had used the lot for the same purpose prior to the 2005 amendment of the CBD. Redevelopment plan that restricted the parking lot permitted use only on lots targeted for acquisition by the municipality. Now, that last statement kind of confused me at that point, but the previous statement, I think that Mr. Jamal and Mr. Parisi have proven that it was part of, part uses of the parking lot. I also think that the fact that it operated as long as it did as a parking lot was basically due to the negligence of the city, not checking up on it. And our job right now, maybe it's not, what we're trying to do is correct the problem. You know, and we're trying to make it legal on their behalf. And that's basically my feeling.
My concern, and correct me if I'm wrong for counsel, but it's not whether or not it was a parking lot in general.
Right.
It's whether or not, my decision is going to be based on whether or not it was a nonconforming use as a public parking lot for public purposes prior to 2005. So that's my concern, and I found everybody's, most everybody's testimony very credible and candid. And it still only tells me that the VFW had ultimate control over the parking lot, who parks there, when they park there, when they're going to lock it up. In my eyes, even the little bit of testimony that says, yes, you can sometimes park there, sometimes you can pay and collect money, I'm still not 100% or totally swayed that that makes it a public parking lot. I think it makes it a use that the VFW decides when they need to collect a little extra money and they have an attendant that's available, is what the testimony was, that they would send somebody out there and they would open it up to the public and collect money. There was also testimony that said that on other times, they would block out the parking lot only for use of special events. They also opted to lease the lot to various companies and different entities in town. They also reserved certain spots. That, to me, says it's not a public lot, it's the VFW who's personally using it for their own benefit, that they sometimes on occasion will use it for their purposes to make some extra money as selling, you know, parking spaces to the public. So that's kind of, that's where I'm going with it. I'm looking at this as being, was it a public lot and a nonconforming use, not just whether or not it was a parking lot? Because I do think that they used it for public purposes on occasion, but I think that was just ancillary or accessory use, not the principal or primary use of the lot.
Well, as a member of the public, I have parked in that lot and I apologize to you, gentlemen, for not paying it, okay? But I also look at other parking lots down on the beachfront area where people pay to use it, but then on days when there is no action on the beachfront, it automatically becomes a public parking lot and everybody else pulls in there and parks. So, I mean, we're only talking about a change of location. One particularly is the one over by the casino, where it was $30 this weekend to park there, but if you go there in the middle of the fall, it's open city, and there's nothing going on, everybody's parking in there for free, and that is the public parking there.
But it's-
That's a private lot as well.
Yeah, it is, and that's what I'm saying.
And the difference with that one, and I think if you were using that analogy in my mind with the VFW, it wasn't that it was open all times and we're going to charge $30 one day and free another day, wasn't the case. It was simply that we're going to choose to use the lot for our purposes or not use it the lot for our purposes. It wasn't open all the time for public use. That's what bothering me is that I'm looking at Pete, the testimony that we have today, sure, on occasions, they've used it for public purposes, but it wasn't always the case. It wasn't at least a principal use of that law for any extended period of time, as far as the testimony that I heard today.
And I think even the, correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard wrong, the applicant didn't even know sometimes if his, if he's going to get towed or not, or a ticket.
Right, there were times that they did tow people in the lot.
He himself didn't even know if he could park there back in the day. So it seems like it's always kind of been, maybe I heard it wrong.
I've lived in town since 2004, that's always been the VFW. That's always been the VFW lot. There was a big sign there that was there the last, I don't know how many years, dozen years, that said VFW lot. I've parked hundreds of times on Lake, on Bond. I've never parked in that lot. I always thought it was a private lot. I knew that people parked in there from time to time. And when you're going to, you know, we all know that you could, you could park there from time to time. I've never parked in that lot because I always assumed, based on the signage, based on everything else in town, that was VFW's lot. The signage, I can't, I would love to have, you know, that signage right here because I remember being very clear and as someone that was looking for parking numerous times, I never pulled into that lot, ever.
All the signage that was there said to me that it was a private lot as well.
I didn't know they used it from time to time for various things.
And I would have to agree with my colleagues. I found it was really under the control of the VFW hall. That they were the ones deciding when it was going to be used for other accessory uses. It was their lot. If they needed to make extra money, they were leasing it to various entities. Right or wrong, that's what they did. So I would still tend to agree that it was a private lot.
I don't think there's anyone on this board that doesn't believe that that lot should be used or could be used if it could be in an interim way. And if there's a possibility for that to happen, that's the avenue to take, my personal opinion.
So are you saying we ask them to come back?
It's not, it's not for this board to decide for an interim reuse.
I mean, even with the closing arguments, I think from counsel's closing arguments, it made very clear, at least to me, that this was kind of a little bit of an end run around the other process of going to the city, requesting that it's going to be an interim parking lot and then see what kind of conditions that possibly they might have or might not have. We don't, we have no idea because the applicant opted to come here instead. But at least as far as my vote and my concern is, I feel like it's an accessory based on the testimony that I heard today, an accessory use of the VFW.
And I would think the planning board and the city council have much more of their thumb on the pulse of what's appropriate, what use.
And I would agree with that as well.
We need parking, it's no doubt.
We need parking, absolutely.
I think the bigger issue too is we just don't have enough, at least I don't, unless we find proof that this operated as a parking lot. We have hearsay from one side, we have hearsay from the applicants, we have hearsay from Michelle saying that she saw signs that it was parking, it's going to be 24 hour. It's all hearsay. We have no documentation, we have nothing from the city. We have no leases from any, from V W, my name.
VFW.
Okay, there we go. With Taka or, or Taka, I guess it wouldn't matter because it predates Taka. But there's nothing except hearsay. And for me, I'm not comfortable proving something based on.
Well, especially if there's another avenue for the applicant to take.
Do our professionals have anything to add?
I will offer that. Do you swear from the testimony given during these proceedings? Will they truth and will truth and nothing but the truth? State your name and your affiliation with the city. Todd Miller, Board Planner. Thank you. So I think the board has done a very good job of jelling down to the pertinent, you know, matter of decisively the accessory element of it versus the conversion to a fully standalone principal use. I wanted to offer some reflection from my time as zone officer in the 1980s. I remember the lot, I remember there being parking, I remember it was paid.
Did it was paid or paved?
Paved.
Paved.
But the way I recall is very much as well as you do. Signage for the VFW. In the 1980s, parking was not in huge demand for the business district. So, you know, if you needed a space, you parked on open, you know, like neighbors going to hassle you. But principally that it was the VFW's lot. And that was all there was to it, you didn't need it. So one thing I was curious to see if the board was going to go the next step was the new owner of the property has only owned the property in the last two years, I believe is what he testified to, and that that change has been recent. The putting up of the signs, the appearance of being a principal standalone paid parking lot has been since the amendment to the redevelopment plan. So everything that happened between 2003 and 2007 kind of gets lost in the work of a pre-existing non-conforming use. But the understanding was that it was an accessory use to the VFW. The other parking was incidental to that. But after the new owner took the property, that's when the change happened, when the signs were being strictly a standalone parking lot for the general public. So I'm hopeful that our report, you know, be that clearer. That's really the point is they had a pre-existing non-conform use. The redevelopment plan changed, but most recently, after the plan amendment, the use changed. And there was no transfer title, but it was missing, there was no zoning permit, there was no, there was no effort to contact the city to get permissions to make any changes, to make it a principal parking lot, principal use parking lot.
Thank you, Donna. So. Jack, do we need to open it up for any comment from the public now, or?
No, it's not a very.
So, okay, so.
Both attorneys finished?
So we need a motion then?
And it's finding of either you.
Making an accessory.
There is in fact a, it's either a motion to approve a non-conforming, finding of a finding of a non-conforming use.
Or as an accessory use to the VFW.
Or you make a motion to deny the finding that it's a valid non-conforming use and reasons for the voting. It's one or the other. So.
So it's not even a finding of accessory use, it's just a finding of whether or not.
It's a non-conforming or not non-conforming.
Yeah, that's the way the application has been phrased. It's an all or nothing proposition.
No, it's primary use. Not as an ancillary.
It's either one of the, it's either one of the areas of non-conforming use. Okay.
So do I have a motion?
Let me be the devil's advocate.
Anybody?
I'll be the devil, okay. Might lose, but I make a motion to approve it for a non-conforming use. Is it?
Second. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
No.
Melanie Chungalola Nester?
Yes.
Stephanie Hunnell?
No.
Russell Lewis?
No.
Chris Abelloni?
No.
Chris Gonzalez?
No.
Yeah, no, a motion to approve that doesn't carry is effective, a motion to deny. You don't have to go the other way. It fails to carry votes. Counsel, have you disagreed with me on that?
No, that's the way the vote went.
Yeah, okay. So motion fails to carry, so effectively it's a deny. Who affirmed your votes?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Jamal. All right. Thank you, Ms. Alonso, Mr. Raffado. Mr. Beekman, welcome back. Hopefully good. Hopefully you're, you're quick. You know, this is another interpretation.
It is, it is.
Please. Mr. Beekman.
Do you want me to reiterate what you're.
I would appreciate it because it's been quite some time.
It has been. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm being everyone. This is with regards to 140 Ridge Avenue. I'm also here for a zoning interpretation. Right now, the build, the property sits in a single family zone area. We're looking to get the pre-existing non-conformity that was in that family dwelling.
Specifically a four-family, correct?
Correct. It exists still as a four-family. Last time I was here, I tried to provide as much as I could. I know that a lot of the files just didn't go back as far as we needed back to 1987. I was able to, contacts.
Wait, where do you start? Jack, I don't even know, can we vote on this?
Please. I'm going to get to that out, I didn't want to.
Oh, sorry, I did.
That's okay, I actually wanted to know that.
Because I don't even know.
The political members on this application for the power of the court meeting for Dan and Melanie Russell. Christopher Allof, you've got to be prepared.
And just to reference, Marina, could you say that call Eric, as he reappeared?
Oh, I'm sure.
Sorry, no, I just went to the bathroom. I thought there would be a reset.
Yes. Should I roll again?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Daniel Harris?
Yeah, here.
Erica Lepo?
Here.
Brittany Ashman?
Here.
Melanie Chungalola Nester?
Here.
Stephanie Hunnell?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Chris Abelloni?
Here.
Chris Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Beekman.
So we have six elements. Can you review them? Yes. Dan, Melanie, Russell, Christopher Allof, Stephanie. This is from the meeting.
So you had them?
I think it was actually February 26th.
Yes, that was, we carried it for that one time.
So let me, I'll check again just to make sure.
Sorry for that.
No, no, that's fine.
That's important.
So Eric is not eligible for this application, correct?
We're discussing, both, both members that are eligible participate in the discussion and ask questions, but they would not be eligible to vote.
And if we didn't vote tonight, I would have an opportunity to listen to the tapes.
That is correct. And if we have eight members, there will only be seven of you all present. That understanding, there's one Ms. Alonso.
Jack, you want me to hold the phone?
Yeah, I'm looking for my notes.
I have, it was the February 26th, 2019 meeting.
That is correct.
I have Chairman Abelloni?
Yes.
Melanie Chungalola Nester?
Yes.
Stephanie Hunnell?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
And Dan Harris.
Correct, I have to say.
All right.
All right, Mr. Beekman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in, just to reiterate a few things, at the last meeting in February, to catch you back up to speed, there was little on record with regards to the property's existence back in 1987 as a four-family residence. I had tried to submit clippings back from the 40s, 50s, 60s showing that there were multiple residents there. But again, it wasn't anything approved, the fact that there had been established more than one resident that was on the property. We, I did go back through, looked at the assignment of leases and rents. Again, it's kind of general to a degree, but I wasn't able to track down the owner who had purchased it in 1987, the comment testified tonight with regards to what had existed at the time of his purchase, what he was used for, what he had gone through the process of applying for, getting the transfer title at the time that he did purchase. So without further ado, there's any more explanation needed at this point. I can just bring him up.
I think you could bring him up, Mr. Beekman.
Mr. Chamberich?
Please, face your right hand. You solemnly swear from the testimony given during these proceedings, will you be the truth, will truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name to the record.
Tony Chamberich.
I'm sorry, a less name?
Chamberovich.
Can you spell that?
C H A M B R O V I C H.
Thank you.
And first off, Mr. Chamberich, so thanks for hanging around. So just to start, are you familiar with the property that's located at 140 Ridge Avenue? Yes. And what is your familiarity with it? I was the owner of a property. Okay, and when did you purchase the property? Sometime in 87. And at the time that you purchased the property, what was your purchase? Was it an investment property or were you using it as a single family? Investment property. And do you recall how many units?
How long did you own the property, Mr. Chamberich?
A couple of years, not.
A couple of years? So you sold it when?
It was actually part of a foreclosure.
It was a foreclosure even then?
In 93, yeah. It actually was foreclosure, there was no actual sale of the property that would have triggered a transfer title.
I see.
Two foreclosures after.
That was the issue we had last time.
Exactly.
I'm sorry.
That's my cell phone. And so do you own the property as an investment property? Do you have other investment properties in the area at the time? I had some in Asbury and some in Longbridge. So that's generally what you end on, you invest in the properties and rent them out. Did you ever make any renovations that would increase the amount of units in the property? No. And you indicated that there were four units at the time? Yes. How many units were occupied at the time? Four. Okay, and were the tents there when you purchased the property? And did they remain all the way through your ownership? I know three did, I'm not sure about the fourth. Okay. At the time that you purchased, your counsel at the time, did he apply for and all C E O's or transfer, transfer title, everything that would typically go through in one of your transactions for investing in properties? Well, my counsel was Judge Grippo and I looked that all up to look. I'm assuming. Just to note, Mr. Grippo did, Judge Grippo now, did actually look for his file. He could go back to 1994, but he couldn't pull any from 1997, so he did, he did try.
Unfortunately, there's no documents to show any of this, correct, Mr. Beekman?
Just the testimony that we have at this point. There, and I'll get to one thing that I just went into the board in one second. And at the time that you purchased, was each unit separately metered? Yes. Yes, in a lecture? Yes, in a lecture. Okay, and how about the sewer? No, the sewer was one double. And did each month of the sewer, each quarter of the sewer have unusually large amounts of usage on it? I don't know if it's large amounts of usage, but it was a very large build. And Mr. Chamberich, do you recall the name of the individuals that were staying at the property at the time of your ownership? And you can use this as a reference if you need to. All right. I remember three of them. Roberto, Royal, Amy Roberts, and Carol Bowden. I'm not sure if John Kelly was there. All right, this is just for the board's purposes, this is a writ of execution. It was for a tax sale, that was in 1993. Purposes of due diligence, the foreclosing bank would have had to find out who the tenants were at the time, so they would have accessed any records that were filed at the time to cut off any interest of where it was staying at the property they were listed on the actual rent to the clothes against. So it just didn't come from my client, they would have came from the actual records that were available to them. And there's no deeds that were with the county, the only place that would have actually had a record of the tenants at the time would have been the city of Asbury Park. So.
Were we marking that?
This was. This was already actually marked in my initial exhibits. I could read, I could remark with those. I don't know what we're at.
My records show we only marked A1 a letter.
All right, so then they give A2.
Yeah, A1 was actually this whole packet.
Isn't that included in the packet?
Do you already remember marking that?
It's.
It's part of A1.
It's contained in A1.
Thank you.
All right, and just for purposes of the, of the property itself, Mr. Chamberich, did the property exist in some of the same structure as you see in this picture that was taken probably a few months ago? Yeah, it just wasn't signed. And that's really the only difference, you see the units are all located, and you see four units with the windows are all located in the same position. And so anything else you wish to add? I think we covered everything, Mr. Chamberbridge, that you had mentioned.
No, that's it.
So you yourself rented those four units?
Yes.
For several years?
Yes.
Just to also follow up with a few things from the state. I did also over the Department of Community Affairs just to find out what other records they had had, because we had talked about that the last time I was here.
Yes.
The only thing that had dated back, and I confirmed it was 1995, that's when the new owner transferred over ownership. Their records indicate the total number of units on the property to be four at the time. I'll remark that as A3. That was also an original submission as well. As I said, I tried to piece it together as well as I could. There's another... As I followed the over request to Asbury Park, they were also able to give me the tax records back only to 2000s. But the tax record also indicates at that point in time that there were four separate units. They were distinguished on page two of this submission. And just to clarify for the board, it just indicates living rooms on floor one was two, living rooms on floor two was two, so far down the kitchen's bath, same way it goes out. So that's just how they distinguish.
Did you provide leases to your tenants, Mr. Chamberbridge?
It's a little kind of dope.
I understand that.
I'm sure we had to sign something because there was security money involved, things like that. So I'm sure...
So you wouldn't happen to have those leases anymore now?
I looked and I looked. I have the other nine houses that I had, I found that I couldn't find them.
Okay.
So in usual course...
And of course, you don't recall ever having a CO or going to the city or having inspections done?
I think the people were there when I bought the house. So I don't remember if I had to give this to them. I'm sure if I did, that Mr. Grapo would have...
But yeah, and you're... With the transfer title, not the individual COs reaching in. Because each unit would have transferred over from when it was purchased at that point. So there would have been any stop holes or things like that available. But unfortunately, Mr. Grapo was unable to find it. Judge Grapo should have...
Excuse me, sir. Being that it was a four-family unit, do you recall having stated fire inspections?
I don't remember.
Because if you have a four-family unit, you are required to have a state fire inspection every two years. It might be three.
Five years. Every five years.
Okay. But I know you... I have a four-family unit.
Yeah.
More we can inspect.
That was also just to... That was one of the documents I'd given. But they only go back to when the date was transferred from the individual. So they had told me the same thing. They don't keep the records back to us at that point. So the earliest I have for any record from the state with regard to inspection was a four-unit in 1995. And that was approximately a year after the property was foreclosed upon by the bank.
So we don't even know when it was converted to a four unit now?
It was the... What we're presenting tonight is that it was converted prior to 1987, which is when my client actually took possession. One of the other documents I had submitted at the prior hearing was that the boilers were actually installed in 1980 as per the manufacturer. But other than that, there's really not much we can go back on. I also in A1 tried to submit clippings identifying different units, different owners. But again, that's not really going to go too far. It's not far proof as to what actually existed at the time. That was the 50s and 60s.
I have a problem with that. It's a well-kept piece of property.
Yes. It is. And as my client testified... I'm sorry. My witness testified to at this point in time. The way it exists now is what he remembers that existed at the time and actually said when he purchased it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chamberbridge?
Can I dismiss them? I'll share once again.
No. One second. For professionals, any questions for Mr. Chamberbridge? Anyone from the general public? Any questions for Mr. Chamberbridge? All right. I appreciate your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chamberbridge.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I do appreciate you hanging out. I do have a writ of writ of warrant for you. I don't think you really needed a testimony. It was the same thing we offered last time, but that was cut off pretty quickly.
Yes.
It would really just be the floor plan and things along those lines when I took over. So is there any questions that you have that I can possibly answer at this point?
I don't... Basically, we have your witness testimony that was a four-family when he purchased it and ran it out. So that's really the basis of your argument at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Beekman?
It is the basis. It's everything we have. I mean, also in addition...
So there's no other documents you could provide? There's nothing else other than the testimony of your current witness?
Well, and also the writ I submitted. I think that definitely goes to show that there were actually tenants of the property when it was foreclosed upon in 1993. Those would confirm that they were there when he purchased the property in 87. And the only way that he could... That the plunder could have obtained with due diligence through the city itself.
That's not a lot to go on, by the way.
It's what is the case. I'm getting when I go on.
It's a little thin.
I know. I mean, I tried to, like you said, when I hugged you last time, I tried to piece it together as a puzzle of something with regards to getting it from 87 to the date. It hurts that there's nothing in the city in the code of law.
I find the writ helpful to show.
And your witness testimony? I'm not going to dispute what he provided. So I don't know how to, other than say... Does anybody have any other comments?
I'll submit, live to the board's discretion at this point. Offered as much as I could.
Comment? Well, we have nothing to deny that it was a four-family and nothing other than your current witness testimony. So I'm leaning towards saying it was a four-family.
I have, you know, spoken with people in the neighborhood and it's three blocks from me. I can't. We can't that. It's three blocks from me, okay? And I do know it's a four-family house.
When were those photos taken, the ones that were submitted?
These were fairly recent.
And the black and white ones?
Oh, yeah. I only have ones that I caught, but I believe that these were what we were asking. These are just separate pictures. Back rush.
These one?
I believe I entered them separately last time. They showed the...
Okay. Okay. So they're from 2018?
They showed the separate meters. They showed the... They're on those lines that we tried to take as...
Yeah. Thank you. Did the black and white photos man look a lot older? So you know when they're taken.
I'm afraid the board's having a little difficulty because it's so little to go on, Mr. Beekman. In the lack of more evidence, I'm afraid we're going to have to come to a vote at this point. So do we have a motion either for or against?
I have a motion to approve it as a non-conforming use.
As a four-family?
As a four-family.
And I'll make a second to that.
All right. Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Melanie Chungalola Nester.
Yes.
Stephanie Hunnell.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Chris Abalone.
Yes.
He was not...
I was on vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman.
I'm going to go out.
Thank you. Take care.
Yes. I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
I'll second that motion.
Hi. Well, to order 9:33 PM. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Erica Lepo.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Melanie Chungalola Nester.
Here.
Stephanie Hunnell.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Chris Abalone.
Here.
Mr. Harris, you're up again. 306th Avenue.
If I may, Andrew Harris again. I'm short shot.
Before you start, I have to recite myself on this one.
Good night, Brittany. As exciting as our meetings are, Mr. Harris. We're going to try to fit you in a little bit, but more than likely, we're going to carry this, Mr. Harris. Do you understand that?
Okay. I figured at least this...
I figured we'll give you a little time on this, but we are going to carry it. Your first application was quite extensive.
As a board, where I represent, 306th Ave, LLC, the property that I'm talking about, it's on 306th Ave, Block 3606, Block 5. The property is located in the R2 Zone. Significantly, the lot size that we have here is 3,500 square feet. We're proposing a two-family house that is a permitted use within the zone. However, because of what is being proposed, there are certain variances that we will need. The proposed building has size of 318 square feet. The lot area is going to require a variance in 2,500 square feet of required unit. We're requesting 1750. FAR is going to be required. Max is 45, whereas the opening of 5. Lot width, which is existing, is 35 feet, 50 feet, which requires an existing non-four-family. The building coverage allows for a max of 25%. The request is for 32.1. Height of 30 feet. We're requesting a variance of 36.5. And stories, two and a half stories, for him, we're requesting four as a result of parking that we're looking for proposing on the site. With that being said, I would call my first witness, Michael Savarese, testify as our architect of the project.
The structure that's on the site right now will be raised?
I think it's empty.
It is? It is. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. If you swear or firm the testimony, give your use proceeding. It will be the truth. We'll treat them like they're the truth.
I do.
State your name for the record.
Michael Savarese. S-A-V-A-R-E-S. I'm the principal of MSA Architects in the little New Jersey. 306th Avenue. Mr. Savarese, can you please do a report of your qualifications? I'm sure I graduated CCY in 1983. I've been practicing architecture as a licensed architect since 1986. Been in front of many woods, up and down coast, and just farthest port of the bay ten years ago. I work at Lack Oliver Allen House, Little Silver, Mall Beach, Westport.
I accept your credentials. Thank you, Mr. Savarese.
Did you say you were licensed just for the record?
He did say he was licensed.
Yeah. Mr. Savarese, you're familiar with the property at 306th Ave here at Asbury Park? Am I correct? Yes, I am. And what I want you to do first is I'm going to show you what's marked as A1 for identification. If you can identify and have a photograph. I thought it was a lot on the corner of Webb and Sixth Avenue. Webb and the lot. The lot's out of the lot. Sixth Avenue is outside the lot. Sixth Avenue is to the north. Picture which got to come from, so it's a relatively flat, empty lot. Right now, it's a big lot. There's no house that is situated on my right side. Can you prepare a plan relative to what is being proposed for this site, correct? Yes. And those are right in front of us. And what is the last revision made on this? We brought it 3419. That is application revision number three. And I'm going to have the next mark as A2 for identification. Mr. Savarese, can you take a look at the mark as 32 for identification? And close any plans of what's being proposed for the site. So to set off, I thought we had the most planned for the site plan and how we got it. And we're describing. Set up two plans of set of floor plan. This shows the floor plan of the 34th block. Third sheet, actually, as you said, is the formations which are on the back. The building is going to be a two-family, but it is... And we need to... Since this lot is a small lot and what we would... The task we have before us is to try and fit a good-looking, well proportioned to be able to be residents here on a lot. And it is somewhat narrow, but has wonderful views, grid of form and the optimism to the east. So what first we're going to do is look to the neighborhood, look around us. And what I want to introduce with evidence is the board. It shows the building of the travel. And a couple of copies to the board. So A8 for identification.
Donna, is this part of the redevelopment zone or...
It's the infill area.
But it's not part of the WRA, is it?
It's not part of the infill area.
Right.
It's the infill.
It's the infill area.
If you do this, if you swear or firm the testimony, give your use proceeding. It will be the truth. We'll treat them like they're the truth. State your name to affiliation with the city. On the other board, Claire.
So when you say it's in the infill area, could you be...
So within the waterfront redevelopment plan, if that plan acknowledges basically the prime renewal area, which is basically where the site is on Webb.
So right across the street is the WRA, correct?
The infill area goes west. You know, it kind of varies from south to north. west. And so, there are kind of stricter standards for things within the prime renewal area, and then different, less intensive standards for stuff of renovation and what.
Yeah, the procedures in the waterfront redevelopment area are a little bit different than if you're in the infill area, whereby the board, incorrect if you're on the Board of adjustment pass jurisdiction based upon the zone that these properties are in. I think the waterfront is not a whole thing.
That would be all planned.
All planning for you.
Any variance, any use or devariances would require a plan amendment, which is different than the infill area. Yeah, majority, zone board would not have jurisdiction in the framework.
Yeah, the way this plan is constructed, you know, it doesn't have the, or strict wording that some of the other redevelopment plans in the city have, that say, any deviations, you know, have to get a plan amendment. So, that's renovation infill area, is that kind of nebulousness.
The little gray area, right?
It's not gray.
No, it's a, it's a.
It's a, it's a.
It's a push it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Savarese.
Before, I just wanted, on A1 photograph that I showed you, just wanted to, you're familiar with the photograph, correct? And you're familiar with the picture of the lot that stepped forth in the photograph, correct? And this photograph, A1 accurately reflects what it is that we're seeing, it turns me into a lot, am I correct?
That is correct.
And that's the condition that we see there today?
I took that picture about eight months ago.
But similarly today, that's the way the library does, correct?
Correct. So, what, I wanna bring to board to text you, is that if you see the yellow, are all multi-family buildings around our lot. This is our lot right here. That's Sixth Avenue. That's Webb. So, we are in the middle of tremendous amount of multi-family houses. The only single-family housing that's here is in the wood, which is on this side of Sixth Avenue. And happens to be next to us, with the high house, happens to be right on this. So, we're in like the middle of multi-family housing. Our two-family house, even if it is allowed by the zone, is not something that would be common in this area.
But, but the two-family is permitted.
Yes, it is.
So, so I'm not sure that you need to sell us on its two-famliness. We're here for the use and the bulk variances. Or for the bulk variances, I'm sorry, and the design.
Well, the reason why I break up is when we try to avoid the question.
No, we understand that it says two to four family.
So, this is a permitted use.
So, next, the next question, or, I'm logged, is how do you fit a legal two-family house with correct number of parking spaces on ground? So, what we did is, we put two under the building and two in the parking. Which left us a half of first floor, ground floor area to use as parking space, which brought us to, out of our variances, this building has a corner fourth floor. So, we've got the flat roof, we're using as possible distance as space we can. So, our units are actually, we use A, ground floor is 491, first floor is 928. So, the total of 14, 15 per second. Unit has 110 feet on ground floor, which is the entry, 82 feet on second, which is scary, you're up there. Two upper floors, 697, and 1,010 for 1899. So, our units are good size, not oversized, but we can't put them all on the ground floor and avoid the fourth floor, because it would be a park.
Um, can, just while we're here, can you just describe to us the circulation pattern, as well as can you testify to the distance from the edge of the property line to the beginning of the first curb cut?
No problem. So, the lot itself, we are 10 foot six back from the sidewalk. We have a 90-foot wide building. The building is 25 feet set back from the street. So, our first parking space is in the 25 of the driveway. Our second parking space is in the garage underneath the building.
Did you receive any comments from the engineer about a preference for parking entering from the side street or the main street?
We did not. The only comment we had is that engineer was aware of the fact that
we will be able to train the parking lot.
There are two ways on the short side.
Yes, we can. It's on the short, it's on the short side.
Understood.
And we have a study agreement for the short side of the lot. To look at the plan of the building, you have two stops in front of the building, two stops in the building. On the west side of the building, this stair, it was up here for the top two, the top unit outside of the doors. And on the right side, this yard comes over from Webb, that is private entrance. So, that has on first floor, master bedroom, the master suite, the balcony to the south. On the second floor, that unit is the living room, kitchenette, and you've got, so that's a three bedroom, it's a lower unit. Probably got it.
So, so on the ground floor, these units are partitioned, essentially, one person, both, both units will have one parking space in the garage, which is, which is?
They both have one parking space in the combined garage, correct?
It is unpartitioned.
Unpartitioned.
Okay, and so then, one unit owner enters on the left and has a master bedroom on the ground floor.
Correct.
And then the other owner has to enter and go up to the s- third floor?
Third floor.
To get to their first level of living space. Did you explore opportunities to have side-by-side rather than stacked?
Yes, we did. We liked the fact that, that we felt the best view was across Webb. So, we liked the fact that our units had great views across Webb, and the building got a nice architectural feeling. Go on, we're there. See in a moment. We don't miss it. We kind of like the new trucks kind of work, because I think.
The, the top, the stacked rather than side-by-side.
We're hoping that the view of the fourth floor, they would have a view, because we're a party again. But what I saw on the site, we will have some complete use of the top view. The second floor unit, you come in, there is the kitchen, two bathrooms, and two bedrooms. One bathroom, and a small bathroom, second bedroom. You go up the stairs, there's a really nice living room, and then that's the bedroom. What's elegant about this unit is the four balconies, the box, the floor, both six and web. So, why we're focused to have the fourth floor unit, that one's got a very nice balcony that is 14 by 14, with a nice rooftop balcony for a personal table. You know, that unit or the record of that unit. Architecturally wise, building is a bit bare, rich base, it was stuck out or drive-in type finish, and balconies that are, are allowed to whip lines for, for some power lines. So, these balconies wrap it around a corner, a setback, around the corner of both Webb and on Sixth Avenue. So, the Sixth Avenue side, they said two garages, two bedrooms on either side, and the balcony is around the corner of the deck. And that's, that's one top balcony is a nice 14 by 14. So, it's simple, it's elegant building, has three nice materials, and it has a nice streetwalk presence for both Webb and this.
Is this a condominium arrangement?
I'm not sure.
Mr. Savarese, I have a question that goes to your designs. Did you even try to, to design a building that would reduce the number of variances to fit in this particular lot?
Yes, we did. Because of the narrowness of the lot, it was relatively possibly difficult to go back to one family. One family, and I don't think it would fit in this area.
So, the economics are dictating the design?
No, I would say the designing, the use of a two-family building is that, that dictating the design. When we look at the A3 for identification, most of, there are some one-family houses, single-family houses that we see in here, but predominantly on Webb Ave, except for the one on the corner, they're all multi-family, am I correct?
That's correct.
And on this side, on Sixth Ave, as we run up and down the street.
But that's not my question, Mr. Karras. My question was, why are we asking for so many variances, when you could have designed something that would have fit the, the site a little bit better?
Well, beginning out of this is two units that are approximately 700 square feet of usable space.
Seven hundred?
Seventeen hundred square feet of usable space, 116 and change, 118 and change, being averaged. That alone takes up bulk, it's causing some of these variances.
But you don't have to design something with 1,700 square feet or 1,800 square feet, correct?
If I wanna have a marketable, rentable unit, or a three-bedroom unit.
Again, you're talking economics.
I don't know, I'm talking pretty good. A two-family that's a viable building.
I think what's impressive about the, the way that you tackled this problem is you fit a lot of space, you fit a lot of floor area and a lot of stuff in a very small space, and left a lot of, I don't know how to call it, because they're kind, because you're, you're putting the front entrance on Webb, right?
Yeah.
The front. So, your side yards are quite generous, you know, when I look at this, but that.
And the reason why I really lost this, because I was trying to make it amenity, but that person is an investment downstairs.
Well, is your, if your address is on Webb, then your rear yard is, right? Like, it's corner lot, so we have this issue of how the circulation and access. And I think that what you've done is you've proven to us that you can probably get two families on this lot. There are some questions, I think, that we have related to the orientation and the location of the use that seem more challenging. That's my comment.
When you say orientation, location, what are you referring to?
So, my, my, my concern stems partially from the fact that there is this fourth floor that's required as a result of tucking the garage underneath, which I think we all appreciate getting the part of, harsh, part of the parking out of view is really a great benefit. However, you, doing it in this way requires you put two curb cuts on the Sixth Avenue side of the, of the lot, right at a corner of an intersection, where you're gonna have people backing up, two cars per unit, backing out of their driveways into oncoming traffic at a corner. So, so the two-family nature, not a problem, but there might be ways to tackle the geometry in a way that take some of that activity and distribute it a little bit better on the site.
Well, we, we did look at going for another variance, and only putting two parking cars on the site, and then coming in from.
Again, I'm not sure it's the number. Not that, it's not, it's not a number. I have no problem with four parking spaces.
Problem.
Yeah.
You're asking, what it says.
And, and four parking spaces are permitted. Yeah.
I get that. What you're asking is, it seems that you want the direction of entering to the garages on, on Webb, and not on Sixth Ave, and it might be.
And maybe I should simply ask you to testify to the fact that, in this current configuration, you, your design is mandating all access happen off of the Sixth Avenue frontage, which is the short end of the site.
Correct.
Okay. And you did explore opportunities to have the orientation in another way?
Yes, we did.
What, what other opportu, what other, actually, no, no, um, you, you explored having the, the access come off of Webb. Is, is, is that true? I'm not trying to.
That is true. And the fact that a 19-foot wide building is the maximum building we could do because of the setback, I can't park a car 19 feet. You need a minimum 20 feet to park a car clear inside the building. You need 20, you need 20 feet, eight inches minimum.
So, you're already asking for a bulk variance, though, right?
Yes, but I figured I would ask for a side yard in front of that variance.
Or?
So, we would, you know, we put all pieces together, we thought we came out with a very good-looking building.
No, there, there's no, no, nobody has disparaged your talent in any way.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, we tackled the design problem, but I think we did, initially, one thing we kind of, what the mansion has noted, we don't need the meeting between the two, it's gonna be one curb cut, not two, and if you're in an hour, you have to be the full, 18 foot, one curb times, it'd be 16.
How?
Looking at the picture, there's actually, there's also drainage on, where one of the, on, on Sixth.
That's not shown. Well, it may be in that. Who knows? Yeah, we'd have to.
So, what would happen with that?
What's that?
There's drainage.
Sewer inlet.
There's a sewer inlet?
Right.
Right where the curb is, and right where the two spots for the curb cuts would appear to be.
I mean, don't believe they're there, because that's 10 foot back, plus four and six, so you're 15 feet from the arc of the corner. I think they're, I think they're catch spaces. And that 15 feet.
He's saying it's in this area.
Oh, it's right in the middle between.
Mr. Savarese, are you?
Are they sworn in?
Yes.
Are you gonna, um, you're basically testifying to the site design as well as the building design?
Testify to the building design. My client did not go to full site work yet, because he wants to make sure he has a viable project.
So, but you're not gonna commit to any particular site design?
It's not, it's not a site plan, okay, that's just.
No, but there are, there are variances that are tied to the site design. I'm curious how, who's gonna be best.
Well, as a, as a residential compliance, we make sure, why would you say that?
All right, we're talking about calculation of the building, like, is relative to your ground elevation. I wanna know how, interesting that. I, I know, that's why I'm asking if he's gonna do it, or if you have an engineer who's gonna do that, or somebody else. If that's gonna be his purview, then we'll talk to him about it. Okay. Um, so, and looking at this, the unit plan, I, I see you designed for the garage space to be sunk two feet below whatever the existing grade is.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, that's based on a presumption that you have two feet to work with?
Correct.
Um, and then, so then, the ground floor of the living space comes up about a foot for that, that bedroom on the ground floor?
Correct.
Okay. Um, but outside the building, that's whatever the natural grade is, so it'll be kind of a foot below ground?
Yes.
Can you describe how the grade, how you envision the grade, it works with those retaining walls on the sides of the driveways?
Yes. We have, it's been a grade, it's like you said, approximately 50 above, it's always going to be two on the eighth floor, and then two on the eighth floor, eighth floor, eighth floor again. We're pulling out a top parapet at 36 foot six.
Okay, so retaining walls on the driveway?
So, driveway, either side of the retaining wall, we go, 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 put a lot of grade back, so it's, so, so, soon as back the side. Coming in from zero, and I stop moving from the top of the building to the 21 feet, getting the retaining wall to work. This wall will be firm, and then we can go to the side. So, we'll be retaining walls here, and here, we'll have a small parapet.
So, you anticipate most of that driveway will be sunken?
A good, good team, the 20 front of that, will be sunken, we will have catch, uh, dry wells when they desire.
But, so then, the ground will connect to the top of that retaining wall?
Correct.
And then it'll be the cut down here on the driveway area where the cars are. Um, and then on the patio, on the back of the building, um, can you describe how that's gonna work compared to the, to the grade?
That patio will be going out of the first floor unit, and will be down below, assuming it's three rises up to grade. This patio is gonna be, this is all going on a ten year on, on eighteen, as well be private.
So, be similar to the back of our room, kind of below ground?
Kind of like the private wall.
So, it's like a sunken living room kind of feeling?
And what we like about the private wall is the fact that it gives them more privacy at that particular patio capacity.
And a patio is strictly for the use of the unit?
The person, the first unit, correct?
And so the Unibetan doesn't get a patio?
Well, yeah, Unibetan has a great patio on the early, because it's a 14 by 14 deck. Where everybody else is up down.
Okay, now, let me go to that, that page. So, the roof deck?
Should say roof deck, it's actually the, the fourth floor deck, the level of the roof.
Good point. Uh, the roof of the building itself is flat, but not accessible?
Correct. And that was another thing I wanted to bring, a few questions, but back to the photograph of the older Victorian single-family homes in there, even though we're going up to 36 feet, we have a flat roof, we're not much above the, the peaks of the, I mean, the bridges adjacent to one building on either side, pretty much a pretty level of this.
Okay, so, there's, um, a deck on the Sixth Avenue facade?
Top of the roof.
On every level?
Correct. There's an L-shaped deck on every level, it varies in sizes, you give the geometry of the step in the back. So, on the upper floor, it's a fourth floor, it's 14 by 14, 14 by 14. Um, second floor, or the third floor, or the fourth, it's 19 by 4 foot 6, and about 15 by 4 foot 6.
And so, on the, uh, third floor?
We're calling it ground floor for a second, third.
Right, so on the plan, it's this proposed third floor?
Correct.
There is a, um, there's sort of a, a roof area, looks like it has HBCs hanging on it, like a steel balcony?
Correct.
So, is that, um, describe how that's gonna be finished or accessed, would it be possible for someone to put chair down?
No, I, I would do that as just for equipment, and access to the HBCs of the HBC, that's on that side.
And you also have an area labeled mechanical balcony?
Yes.
I think that's what we're talking about.
No, there's another.
There's one on the back, and there's one on the front. On the back is labeled mechanical. One on the back is labeled mechanical balcony. One on the front doesn't have a label. So both, are all those mechanicals for one unit, or how does that?
It's split between the two different units, we have our own seminars.
So, so the guy in unit B has access on the third floor to mechanical balcony? But the guy in unit A doesn't have access to mechanicals on...
When you say mechanics, you mean the HVAC system?
Yeah, just a, a token, that's it.
Yeah.
Small, without the big. We purposely put them, there's a setback in the building, so if it isn't, we actually, we wanted to put them on, when we get spring designs, we could put them on the balconies that are in the... So we get smaller, we try and not clean them off.
No, yeah, I appreciate they didn't want them on the ground, I mean, it's another issue with the ground level.
Right.
How do you access that single unit that's on the third floor? Has this also been re-designated as a flood zone?
No.
Yes.
That's, yes.
Yes.
We just looked it up at the map maps, and it's in an example.
The preliminary firm says it's not. It's like to call it, I mean, as a certified preliminary manager, I can do that.
As we all know, those maps, you don't change it, the latest publication maps.
I'm not sure now, is that a yes or a no?
It's a yes.
As I laid out in the report, Eva has an effective map and preliminary map. And Eva says, can you use whatever is the most prescriptive of the two maps? Preliminary map shows this to be a flood zone with base elevation until. We don't know what the base, what the native ground level is. We don't know if it's 10, might be 10. Which is feet above sea level, based on a certain data. In which case, you know, it's great. But if the ground elevation on this lot right now is below 10, there could be significant problems for being able to develop the way he's proposing.
You prepared a report?
The planners report.
No, what we had is insights question.
Is that an insight report?
Is that the effective map?
He's looking at the effective.
Yes.
So basically, you're saying in the worst-case scenario, it's a flood zone?
Yes. But no preliminary waterway patch, no these zone, it's just flood. Up to a reach of 10.
So have you considered that in your designs, Mr. Severes?
We'll consider it within the example, because that's what we consider. We did not consider the base level to be flat, no, we did not.
I can give you the panel number.
Watch it, can you do me a favor, can you just look over your report to me tomorrow? And include that information as well.
So you may want to rethink this.
I mean, sub-towns among the county have gotten the preliminaries certified in their effective items. But we don't have an estimate of when Russell Martin County is going to get their preliminary firm. By wise, Eva is not the most efficient option federally to see these days.
Not on my... What we will say, what we can actually say is that we will comply with the new maps. In fact, they show in our survey, this lot shows it in one type.
Without my report, Mr. Karas is severely incapable of the issues I've raised about height and...
I agree, I think, I think we need to...
Yeah, listen, we're at 10 o'clock anyway.
So, we should carry.
May I just ask us one or two more questions?
Very briefly, yes.
So in your proposed floor plan, you are showing separate entrances. And this gets to the issue of the overall bulk of the building. You're showing separate entrances and separate circulation for each unit. Did you explore having a combined entrance to reduce the overall amount of, like, you have to double the circulation area, which drives the bulk of the building? So I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but I want to, I want to ask a question about whether or not it was explored to have a common entrance to reduce the overall bulk of the building and...
And you don't have to answer that, Mr. Severes, but that's something for you to think about. And I think we can table it for now and let Mr. Karas catch up with our board planners' reports. And we can carry at this point. So, Irina, we need some help.
So the next... Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
I believe we were pretty full on the first meeting in June, and the second is, what, got three applications already?
Yes, so it's going to be the first one in July.
July. July 11th, I believe. Is it 9th?
It's the 9th, July 9th.
Do we have that agreement, Mr. Karas, July 9th?
Yes.
And will you, do we need a letter stating that you will?
I'll do it on the...
I appreciate that, so I'll make a motion to carry the Sixth Avenue application to July 9th, 2019, without further notice.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know what, thinking about it, we had Sewell that was on for the night, because I don't have to re-visit that. There's a planner memo that's going to be necessary on that, because we didn't realize, I understand, it was scattered slightly in the dolphin zone?
Yes.
It was carried from 2002 or something. Let's, we're going to move with the design or redesign of the interior of the building. So why don't we calendar that, continue the application to a new date? And as I'm discussing, Michelle will be conditioned on, obviously, the planner memo, one of these, get going on the design. If it's planner memo, it would be here. Once, it's going to be removed, the whole planner, to remove it from the redevelopment plan, let it's removed, and then the law comes here. Have I seen those notices?
No, because we removed it.
I thought it was taken off the agenda and removed as an application. That was my understanding, Mr. Karas. And that's what you explained to me, Irina.
That's what Michelle, Michelle told me.
What address on Sewell is this?
405.
405, 405 or 407.
I asked you.
Since Michelle stated that it was to be removed, that it would take too long, that we would have to re-notice it.
I can't...
I can't speak for Michelle.
I haven't seen notices that I, so I can't rule. It was specifically what we decided not to do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Karas, I cannot agree or disagree, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Andy, she told me to remove it. And I don't even have the folder with me to go through the notices.
All right.
You'll have to contact Ms. Alonso and straighten it out, that way, I don't know what else to say.
Oh, there's not the Q saying never should have been removed. That should have been the information I needed to see, unfortunately, the information got on, it's not.
Is there something else that we can do, put it on another date and carry?
No, because you can't, I can't require jurisdiction to see it because I don't have notices. Can't do that.
Aye.
The board is so pleased as I can go get the notices? If not, then it's late.
Jack, what's the best option we have at this point?
If you want me to look at these notices, it's not on the agenda. Do you want me to look at the notices and require jurisdiction on it?
Yeah, I'll re-notice, but let's put it on for another night.
Oh, that's fine.
Let's just get it, let's get a date on for another night.
Well, do you have to re-notice to put it on another date in order to carry?
No, you're not going to.
We're just, we're going to put, we're going to calendar for another night.
Just put it on calendar for the night, and then do notices in the interim. And I'm sure that we'll drop a form, we'll have jurisdiction received that evening.
I'm a little confused, Jack, how are we approaching this?
Simple. All you're going to do is you're just, you're just carrying, you're not carrying, you're just putting it on for a date certain. But I obviously have to get the notices, so you're just, you're just putting it on a calendar right now.
I'll re-notice it, put a date down, we'll put it on.
Okay.
Very simple.
So then...
We'll do July 9th.
That we can do, that's fine. So I don't need to make a motion for that?
No.
No, okay, so...
Just instruct your secretary to put it on for that night. And along with this one, and this one you carry, this one you have to, it's by formal martial business.
Oh, we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then this one, we carry it out for the first of July 9th, same for the other. And you also calendar the application, please, the calendarization.
405 Sewell Avenue.
405 Sewell Avenue, and put it on the agenda for the night this week. And we're going to get notices for that, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karas, thank you, Mr. Segal.
Thank you.
We only have, we have one resolution.
Yes.
I have it digitally. Resolution for 1400 Madison Avenue.
Now conforming use.
I'll make a motion to approve the ClearView Equities 1400 Madison Avenue resolution.
I'll second.
Just one second. Christopher Avalon.
Yes.
Daniel Horace.
Yes.
Stephanie Henall.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman is not here, and Eric Gallo.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Aye.
Probably, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Owen.
All in favor?